Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Meeting on November 23rd, 2015. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under changes to the agenda, I would like to propose that we move item 11A to after 12B. Does anybody have an objection to that? All right, hearing none. We will deal with 11A after 12B. All right. Mr. Rubens, is there any report from a closed session?
There's no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next we're going to talk about council communications. These are announcements on brief items, members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Why don't we start with Mark? You were away last meeting, so why don't you start first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few items to go over. One is I hope you all received notification that Kevin McCarthy, a San Carlos resident and head of Rethink Waste, the organization which manages our garbage and recycling joint powers agency, is resigning effective at the end of this year. He's taking a new job in Oakland where he will have the opportunity to use his skills and experience helping multiple communities enjoy the same kind of success which he and his team brought to San Carlos. I want to thank him publicly for his service to the community and wish him all the best in his new endeavors. A search for a successor has already begun. I'd also like to say that I enjoyed working with Bob, Cameron, and Mayor Collins on the Measure V campaign. Your commitment was more than just financial, although the significant contributions you each made were important. Cameron was our champion blockwalker visiting hundreds of homes. Ron, as far as I could tell, was at the forefront in working the phone lines, getting out the word. Bob and I too played another set of roles in reaching out to the community. At the end of the day, our friends and neighbors chose to reject Measure V, but that always was their choice to make, and the fact that they were given the choice after careful consideration of community input on how our community might be improved is testimony to how this council chooses to listen before it makes decisions. We do, however, need to recognize that while we listened attentively, we missed something. Campaigns are fought mostly over three or five percentage points. For Measure V to show 27 points less support than the polling data we used to decide to put the choice before voters is unlikely to be the result of campaigning, no matter how effective the no side was or how ineffective the yes side was. Personally, I think we owe it to the community and to future councils to understand what questions didn't get asked or what answers were misinterpreted. On a more personal note, I want to respond to a comment posted by someone in an online forum during shortly after our last council meeting, which I missed. The gist of that comment was that my absence from the meeting had something to do with the failure of Measure V. Nothing could be further from the truth. The reality is, one of my sisters-in-law, one of my sisters in all but blood, died, and I wanted to help my oldest brother and his children work through their sudden loss. I thank those of you who have given me your condolences for your kindness. Finally, last Saturday, I spent a fun hour or so helping haul French broom cut down and uprooted by Tom Morse out of Arguello Park. French broom is a very invasive, non-native plant which, from what Tom tells me, would take over huge chunks of the park were it not for the ongoing efforts of many people. That volunteer spirit, the idea that keeping up our community doesn't end when we pay our taxes, that it's worth volunteering our time to make things better even when it benefits people other than ourselves and our families, is a huge part of what makes San Carlos such a special place. It's also an underappreciated virtue, whether it's getting better parks or keeping librarians in our local schools whom we almost lost years ago. We wouldn't have what we do if it weren't for the selfless attitude of our residents. Through their contributions of time, effort, and money, they enrich the life for all of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I just wanted to highlight to folks that went on over the weekend at the music store downtown, the one that sits between what's now a real estate office and the bar. I'm saying that because I'm trying to remember the name of the music store. But I know, Clock Tower, thank you very much. So that's owned by our neighbors, Brian and Susan, and they had a recital of all the kids that take guitar lessons there. And it was a very successful event. There were people pouring out onto the sidewalk. It was so full inside the store, people that wanted to see these kids perform. And I just think it's an example of, you know, one of the things that our small businesses in the downtown do and how that builds the community of San Carlos and what a wonderful thing that is. So that was the first item. The second item that I wanted to bring up is partly as kind of a personal announcement and then something for the council to consider is I've finished my, all the cycles of my chemotherapy that I was under for my cancer treatment, six of those, and now I go into the next phase, which is stem cell treatment. And these days what they do is they take your own stem cells, put them aside, give you really heavy dosage of chemo to make sure they've looked in all the corners and crevices and gotten everything, and after they've done that, then they put your stem cells back in. And quickly, the reason they take your stem cells out is because that chemo is so strong and so heavy-duty, it damages your bone marrow for a period of time. So I'll be going through that, and where council comes into this picture is that I'll be going into the hospital on the 19th of January if everything goes well, and I won't get out of the hospital probably until either the 15th or the 22nd of February. It's a long haul. I'm not looking forward to it, but that means I'll be missing a few council meetings, the last one we have in January at least, and probably, very possibly, the two council meetings we have in February. There's no guidance to the council on how to deal with this kind of thing in our code of ethics or code of conduct, but I wanted to bring it up now so that if the council wants to consider some type of formal resolution or action giving me a leave of absence, then, you know, I think that would be fair, and it would be a fair thing for the public to sort of say to the public, "We've done this, we've handled this situation this way," and then people won't be asking questions, I would hope. But that's the situation, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Matt. And personally, I want to, you know, give you my best and wish you well, hope you'll get through it. I'm sure you will. We'll all be pulling for you. My next question, though, is for Mr. Rubens and Mr. Malpe. How do we, what do we do to accommodate Matt?
Well, in the past, how I've seen it done when a council member was going to be absent from a meeting, he or she would contact the mayor, and then the mayor would announce at that meeting that the council member was excused. And the reason that's important is under state law, it's not in our code of ethics, but state law has a provision that talks about unexcused absences for more than 60 days is considered a vacancy under state law. So the key fact is to make sure that there's an announcement that the absence from a meeting is excused so that we don't have 60 days of unexcused absences. So it could be done by resolution. It doesn't have to be done. The statute doesn't specify a procedure.
Can we informally take a vote and say it's okay?
Well, you know, we could do that. You probably would want to agendize if you're going to take a formal action like that, but I think the way we've done it in the past is adequate from the legal standpoint that the absence is excused. Somebody's sick or ill can't be there.
Okay. Through the chair?
Yeah. So this is less than 60 days, but from what I'm hearing from the city attorney is you could just do it on a case-by-case basis, which is fine. That's perfectly fine as well.
All right. And if the council would like, and if Councilman Grokot would just like a public record of the action, sort of explaining what's going on, I'd be happy to put that on for the first meeting in January.
Okay. That sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a meeting of Commute.org, which is our congestion management agency in the county. There's representatives from every city, all 20 cities plus the county. We meet quarterly, and they are the folks that run a lot of shuttles. A lot of it's up in the north county, more than the south county, but there are some shuttles down here. And they had done some surveying, and the survey, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's not, I guess it doesn't surprise me that upwards of 2/3-plus folks drive their own cars to work for a myriad of reasons. And on the other hand, Caltrain and BART and the other agencies, especially Caltrain, are seeing a huge increase in folks taking that, those modes of transportation. So there's good news, and then there's hopefully to-be-better news. The agency consistently tries to work with employers to give incentives to folks to take public transportation or to carpool or to vanpool or whatever, and they're making small progress with it, but it's difficult to get folks out of their cars, as we all know, because we're all driving the roads ourselves. So I just wanted to report back that we're attempting to slowly make some progress, but it's still about 2/3 of the folks are still driving, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of meetings to update folks on. I chair the Two Plus Two Committee, which is made up of two city council members and two members of the school board. We had a meeting last week, and we had an update from our police chief about our school resources officer program to help kids get to school safely, and we're very appreciative of all the work that's being done there. Talked about the Four Corners Project, which is very quickly moving to final design, which is a project to reconfigure the intersections between Tierra Linda and Carlmont to help improve traffic flow. And we talked about strategies to get more bus routes in town, which will help alleviate traffic in the morning when kids are getting to school and help provide more linkages to downtown. So that was a very productive meeting. I also attended a steering committee meeting for Peninsula Clean Energy. For those who don't know, there's an effort in the county right now to create a local clean energy organization that will give businesses and residents an option other than PG&E to get a cleaner, more renewable source of electricity, and it will cost about roughly the same as what folks are paying today. The update is that the County Board of Supervisors voted to approve the formation of the Peninsula Clean Energy Joint Powers Authority, and now this is going to come before each of the 20 cities in San Mateo County to vote as to whether they too want to join this agency. It's going to be on the city council agenda on January 11th, and there was a presentation about marketing efforts and about basically the rollout, which the plan is to begin sometime in October of this year. I attended the Council of Cities Dinner in Brisbane on Friday evening. The Council of Cities is made up of all the cities in San Mateo County. The topic of conversation was about toxic cleanup. We had a representative from the Environmental Protection Agency based in San Francisco who talked about grants and ways to get federal funding to do toxic cleanup, so I thought it was an important issue for San Carlos because we've got a lot of sort of residual groundwater pollution from businesses from many decades ago, and I'm going to pass the contact information on to the staff. Lastly, I had the great opportunity to join the mayor at the San Carlos Elms and give the residents of the Elms an update on city business on Friday. We spent about an hour with a good group of folks. A lot of topics of conversation, lots of good questions, lots of good feedback. We did talk a lot about the dog park, which I know folks are here to talk about tonight. We also talked about preserving kind of the downtown charm and downtown character, which is also on tonight's agenda, so it was a good discussion. That's what I have.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to attend a retirement party for Jim Skinner. Jim Skinner's been the chief of, or chief fire chief in Redwood City for the last several years, and as many of you know, we have a fire services agreement with the city of Redwood City, and he's provided some great leadership, and it was just an honor to be able to go to his retirement party. As Cameron mentioned, we visited the Elms last Friday. I think Cameron's going to do a great job. It's been, it's a tradition, actually, I believe Mark started a year ago, and I sort of somewhat reluctantly took it over, but I came to look forward to it every month because there's just a great group of folks there that always are very welcoming and enjoy, I just enjoy being with them. On Saturday, I went to, over to Burton Park. If you've seen some of the stucco walls around the corner there by Chestnut and Arroyo and along the playground, there's a lot of, some of the paint on the walls has been fading and chipping and looks kind of, it looked kind of worn. So the Rotary organized a painting crew to repaint those walls, so I showed up in an old pair of Levi's and shirt I don't care much about, but I'm not sure how much, what got more paint, the wall or my shirt. But it was, it was a lot of fun, and I'm grateful to Andy Klein and the Rotary for inviting me. Lastly, I want to talk about, this is kind of exciting, it was a lot more fun than the other things I talk about, but I do want to talk about a young lady that's in the audience tonight. Rethink Waste is a, you know, it's the organization that helps us with recycling. They hosted their second annual poster contest in celebration of America Recycles Day to increase awareness of the benefits of recycling among local youth, and the theme of the contest was Recycling at School is Cool. And it was open to all third grade through sixth grade classes in the Rethink Waste Service Area, and I'm proud to report that Margot Paluska, who I believe, is that you right there, Margot? No? Is she here?
There she is.
There she is. Hello, Margot. Margot, that's more applause than any of us ever get up here. She's a third grader from Heather Elementary, and she got second place, and I think her artwork was on display behind me. Ms. Paluska's achievements and artwork were celebrated during the first annual America Recycles Event at the Shoreway Environmental Center on Saturday, November 14th. So again, congratulations, Margot, and I could never draw that good. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any staff comments on city administrative business?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if you did this earlier. The only thing I've got for you is under changes to the order of the agenda, and that would include the removal of item 10B, which was adopting a resolution denying an appeal of an administrative citation, and that appeal has been withdrawn, and so there's no need for that item tonight. So if anybody's here for 10B, that item be no longer on the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next is item six, presentations. We have a presentation tonight on E-911, and that would be Chief Roethlis.
Mayor Collins, I'm the City Council. Greg Roethlis, Police Chief. I'm here before you tonight just to do a brief update and a little advisement on E-911 and what it's all about, and that came out of a strategic planning workshop. Councilmember Matt Grokot had an interest in just kind of knowing what E-911 is, how it works, and what the status of that would be in San Mateo County. So I invited Bob Lottie to come. Bob Lottie is currently the Deputy Director of Public Safety Communications Operations in San Mateo County. If he looks familiar to you, he has a career, a long career with Belmont Police Department. He left there as a captain. He went on to be the police chief in the city of Colma, and he retired from that position. While Bob was the police chief, he also spent time as a president of the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association. And so to have Bob in a role where he has operational responsibility of a comp center, given his police background, really is advantageous for all the customers of Public Safety Communications in the city as well. So I'll have Bob come up and just do a little brief, a few minutes on what it's all about. Chief, come on.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, as stated, I'm a Deputy Director for San Mateo County Public Safety Communications, the dispatch center for San Mateo County, and all of your police and fire emergency dispatches go through there. My boss, the director, is a little bit under the weather, so he asked me to step in tonight and talk a little bit about E-911. I will say this, and we have a good-sized member of the public here today, so when you call 911, you're going to be asked two questions. The first one is, what is your location? And the second question is going to be, what is your location? And it's very important because now with cellular 911, we don't always get your location, and without your location, we can't get you any help. So just as a way of being aware, stand by, you're going to be asked those questions twice, and then help is on the way. E-911 basically is the enhanced version of the 911 system that we already have, but our current 911 system came into play in about the mid-'80s in the peninsula. Prior to that, you could dial the operator, you could call a business line, you could call an emergency line. With the enhancement of the 911 system, now we were able to get help to you immediately, and that 911 system, 111 system, as it is today for all landlines, tells you where you are. You know, we can, when it comes into the center, we know the phone number you called from, and we know your location because it's a phone line that's locked to where you are for landlines. What has happened in the last 30 years, of course, is that there's very few landlines, even at businesses, residents have fewer and fewer, and everybody has cellular phones. So there's been a few enhancements with the 911 system. The first was the initial use of 911, followed by the ability to take cellular 911 calls. And all of those calls at one point in time went to the Vallejo CHP Dispatch Center and then had to be sent out from there, so it was a little bit slow. Now they come right into our dispatch center and they can be meted out as necessary. The next was the use of 911 and locations. Now we can, after a little bit of a laborious process, we can find out where you are on your cellphone, but it might take eight or 10 minutes and some other phone calls before we can actually get right onto where your location is, which is why we ask for a location immediately, and we ask it twice. The enhanced 911 system that I'm here talking about tonight is the ability for Public Safety Communications to take emergency 911 information through text, either through a tablet or an iPad or your cellphone in the event that you couldn't for some reason use your telephone service. We always recommend telephone service because we can get the best help to you the fastest that way. We in San Mateo County Communications are dedicated to providing the best service possible, and we're constantly trying to find ways to do that. We have a new facility that's coming onboard in about 18 months. As that is going on, we are looking at our enhanced 911 system and upgrading it so that we will be able to take that text data and be able to get help to people who need it who couldn't otherwise call in. There's quite a few things that have to happen. The technology is there, but there's hardware, software, programming, business practices, and all a number of other things that would have to change in the process. We, like I said, we are dedicated to making that change, but it'll happen over a period of time. We're thinking if it comes into play, it'd be in about the 18-month to 24-month range, and who knows what lays in store for us in that timeframe when it comes to technology and communications. That's about all I have on that topic. I'd be happy to take any questions if you had any or leave you my information so that you get ahold of me at a later date.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to confirm something that you mentioned. For some reason, I was under the impression that there was some federal mandate that all cellphones had to be able to, manufactured after a certain date, had to be able to report the location of the phone.
They do report it. It's just not reported with the phone call. We have to make, take other steps in order to get the exact location. With the enhanced 911, it brings that, all that information in immediately and becomes real-time information versus us having to call a specific number and say, where is this happening, and then pinpointing that location.
Privacy issues notwithstanding, I'm glad to hear that you're doing something about that because I have to admit, I'm kind of astounded the system doesn't already do that because I thought that was the intent of it.
And it does work. It's just a little bit slower than a landline situation. That's all.
Thank you.
All right. Cameron, your light was on. Oh, now it's back on again. Go ahead.
So thanks for the presentation. So you said one of the new features is you can now text 911.
Yes.
And so, and I assume you text literally 911.
Yes.
So if somebody is in that situation, are they going to get a text back, and what kind of information should they include in the text when they're reaching out for help?
Certainly. In San Mateo County, we do not, and I have to say this very clearly, we do not currently take text 911 calls. We don't have that capability.
I see.
What you will get if you send that from San Mateo County areas is you will get an immediate response that says, "Call 911 on the phone" because we don't take your texts. Once the system comes into place, like I said, 18 months to 24 months as we, you know, put it into place, then we would be able to take that information, and someone would be able to text right back to you and get to the gist of the emergency.
Got it. Okay. Well, that's good to know. Thanks.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next item is a presentation by the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District on Measure AA, and that would be Cecily.
I have the service.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, members of the San Carlos City Council, and my neighbors and friends of San Carlos. My name is Cecily Harris, and I'm the Ward Seven Director of Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. I represent San Carlos, a portion of Redwood City, a portion of Woodside, and Half Moon Bay up through Pacifica. I'm very pleased to be here this evening. I look forward to sharing some of what we've been up to for the last year or two and some of the highlights of the coming year. Our district was formed in 1972 with the mission to acquire open space, restore natural environment, and provide access for passive recreation such as hiking, mountain biking, and nature study. Voters expanded the district in 1976 to include southern San Mateo County. And further, in 1992, the district expanded again, including a small portion of Santa Cruz County. And finally, in 2004, we had another expansion, including boundaries out to the San Mateo Coast from just south of Pacifica to the Santa Cruz-San Mateo County line. We're funded through property taxes, partnerships, and grant funds. In 2014, the voters passed Measure AA, a $300 million general obligation bond, which enables us to continue to preserve land, protect natural resources, and provide access to open space lands and trail connections. Today, we have 26 preserves of over 62,000 acres and covering 550 square miles. We are governed by a seven-member elected Board of Directors, and in addition to myself tonight, I have two colleagues, Nonet Henko and Jed Seer. We have over 130 employees, which range from rangers to maintenance crews, biologists, planners, GIS technicians, and more. We also have over 500 volunteers assisting in everything from weed removal to docent-led tours to youth education. Within San Mateo County, we have a number of open space preserves with over 25,000 acres of open space. These preserves range in size from the small but lovely Teak Hill, 640 acres, and it's nestled next to Hutter County Park in the Redwoods. Our largest preserve in the county is Parisima Creek Redwoods, which flows from Skyline Boulevard down to Highway 1. Our nearest preserve is San Carlos's Pulgas Ridge, which is on Edgewood Road across from Edgewood County Park, very popular park, and it has an off-leash dog park. The slide also shows some of the other preserves in San Mateo County, which I will highlight in a moment. Some of our highlights in the last couple of years are, again, I mentioned, we passed, voters passed Measure AA, and in order to keep up with that, we had our first bond sale in June of 2015 of $45 million. We are very pleased that our credit rating was increased to AAA. In order to use these funds wisely, we've expanded our business model to build capacities that we need to ramp up project and program delivery, to open up parks and preserves and provide public access. We plan to open several preserves in the next few years and others following as we continue to purchase land for trail connections and wildlife corridors. continue to purchase land for trail connections and wildlife corridors. Some future public access that I'm very excited about is at La Honda Creek Redwoods Open Space Preserves, about 15 miles from here. It's one of our most stunning preserves heading out to the coast. It's home to some rare old-growth redwoods. Right now, only a small part of the preserve is open to the public, but we're planning to open some other sections in coming years, which includes public access at the Sears Ranch Road in La Honda, but also providing parking and trails near the iconic Red Barn along Highway 84. In addition, we'll be focusing efforts on Miramonte's Ridge Open Space Preserve, which is once known as Mill Creek. And that's in the gateway to the San Mateo coast along the Highway 92 corridor. It's right next to Burley Murray State Park, and there's a potential to add, you know, a skyline to the Sea Trail and some other connections to the state park. Another exciting project is the San Francisco Bay Trail. We're partnering with San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, who've both provided grants, and the cities of East Palo Alto and Menlo Park to complete a .6-mile gap along the Bay Trail, which will open about 80 miles of trail of San Francisco Bay Trail. So that's a really exciting project. We're also really busy with our natural resource programs. Of course, in the years of drought we've been having, we're very focused on fuel reduction and watershed protection. So over the last five or so years, we've removed quite a bit of eucalyptus trees at Pogus Ridge to, because they are a fire hazard and we want to make the preserve safer. We've also been focusing on some watershed protection to ensure our trails are open year-round and to keep erosion and sediment from, you know, clogging our creeks. We also have a fuel reduction program which helps us better manage our lands. We also have 10,000 acres of open space land dedicated to grazing, of which 8,000 acres is in San Mateo County. So we've been working a lot with tenants on these properties. We have a number of community partnerships with nonprofits and other organizations, including Actara, who we're working with to bring youth to our preserves. Latino Outdoors is another program we're working with to bring families. Walk with the Doc is kind of a neat program with San Mateo County Medical Association. Doctors actually lead walks in our preserves and talk about healthy living. So, other things. Right now, we are recruiting members for a bond oversight committee and applications are being accepted through December 11th. I invite you to join our email mailing list to be notified about upcoming events. You can also send us an email if you're interested in certain projects you might find on our website or on Facebook or other social media. We also have a large group of volunteers, as I mentioned earlier. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Cecily. Very nice presentation.
Thank you.
This is an interesting night.
It's fun being here.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Cecily. By the way, I want to reiterate your comments earlier about anybody who's here who takes advantage of some of the dog park resources. Pogus Ridge is my favorite go-to place, and more importantly, my dog's favorite go-to place. The question I had for you relates to Pogus Ridge. At one time, there was a garbage can there, and then that service got discontinued. And I've actually had some conversations with staff about whether there was a way, if funding could be found or reinstated. It turns out it's out of San Carlos's service area, so it would be... Do you know if that's being considered at all? Because it would substantially improve the aesthetics of the area.
Right. Well, our organization really focuses on, more on passive recreation. We have a number of gravel parking lots, a lot of natural trails, and not a lot of other infrastructure, you know, which would include buildings and other amenities. Now, we don't have trash cans in our preserves in any of them. We, you know, try to encourage and educate people to pack it out. At Pogus Ridge, there was a longtime volunteer who chose to put a trash bill right next to the restroom. And, you know, she actually took the bags out herself. So as far as I know, we don't have any plans to add any trash cans because, you know, one thing that does happen, my day job is in county parks, and we find that when you have trash cans, especially in parking lot and trailheads and busy areas, people really empty out pockets, cars, drop off mattresses, and all kinds of great stuff that really wasn't part of their hike or their natural experience. So...
Not that I recall seeing those things ever.
Well, no, maybe that's an exaggeration, but people do really fill the trash cans. And it's beyond what they were probably using, you know, in a park on a given day.
Thanks, Cecily. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on now to public comment. Public comment is a period where a person wishing to address the city council matters not on the post agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you're speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, as allowed under the Brown Act. The city council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future city council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and a formal public discussion and input at that time. That's the end of sort of the official announcement, but I would, because we have a lot of speakers, we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight. We have a lot of people that have things that they want to say, and I think all of us want to hear them. I'm going to hold to a very tight two-minute timeframe. There are three lights on the podium. The green one means you can start talking. When you see the yellow one, that means wrap it up. You've got about 30 seconds left. If I cut you off, please, it's not personal. It's just, I'm trying to make sure that we give everybody a chance to have their comments. And we also have a council member that really needs to leave by about 10:30, so we would all like to make sure that we get through the agenda in a timely fashion. So with that, the first speaker is Paul Maginetti, and I just want to say, Dimitri, you mentioned that you ceded your time to Paul. I'm not going to do that. If Paul wants to talk for two minutes and you want to talk for two minutes, that's fine, but I just need to hold to this two minutes. All right? So actually, Dimitri, your card was first, so if you want to come up and talk or if you want Paul to talk.
Mr. Councilman? Thank you for letting me speak.
Green, good. I'm backing it up.
I'm here to exercise my right under the Constitution to petition my government over grievances. On October 3rd, as many of you probably know, there was illegally dumped pile of an excavated sewer main that produced dust contaminated with human waste that coated our neighborhood, sickening many. I discovered through my various document requests that the Public Works Director had known of the illegal dumping for some time, and these were in complaints from Samtrans. I also found that the city manager misled the community by implying the city was unaware of the situation until the community complained. I have emails from Samtrans that shows that that is not true. I also discovered that the city attorney's office withheld without explanation the emails sent from Samtrans to city staff documenting what went to the very heart of my requests, constituting a violation of the California Public Records Act. I also have here a list of the number of people sickened. I know that people have said, oh, well, it's old, it's old manure, it should be fine. I can tell you as a biochemist and someone in the medical device for more than 30 years that even dead bacteria can create an extreme immune response. Anybody with a suppressed immune system could get a very grave infection because of that. So I have here formal complaints.
Can you wrap it up?
Yes. For Jeff Maltby, Jay Walters, Greg Rubens. That's my list.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, Walter Ranieri. Walter, are you here?
You should come get it or whatever it is. Mayor, council, thank you so much. This will be very short, so we can keep moving. I provided Yvette some information which can be incorporated into the official administrative record for tonight's evening, and thank you, Yvette, for that recordation services. I'm here to suggest and recommend that the council authorize and/or support a task force to bring the community together on issues associated with matters that aren't on the agenda but generally are, i.e., the involvement of a broader community-based approach to address issues like the off-leash dog run facilities in the city of San Carlos. I'm very happy to hear that there are some not too far away that haven't been previously mentioned in various meetings, but I'm here to encourage a broad-based community approach to bring everyone together, to create a community that, I guess we celebrate our 90th year as a city, and I'd like us in the year, you know, 90 years from now, 180 years of city involvement, that there be a wonderfully growing, vibrant community and not one that's being fractured by issues that could be resolved with community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Next speaker is Gina Vandelos.
Hi. I wasn't really planning on talking today, but I just had to when Matt mentioned clock tower music in the recital. And I've been a music teacher in San Carlos about 20 years, and I teach a lot of San Carlos kids. Two times a year, I give student recitals, and in the past, I have used the Senior Center. And I loved it. Parents loved it. It was so local, and I could rent it at a doable rate. Last time I inquired about giving my student recitals at the Senior Center, they said, well, it's now $600 for, I'm recalling, about $600 for three hours for a little student recital. So I was priced out. You know, everybody else, you know, the parents, we all have to go someplace else. Anyway, I did address the student, the city council last year about this issue. I know the Senior Center is being revamped and updated, and I just wanted you to remember that the kids of San Carlos need a place to do their recitals that's local, beautiful, and I would really appreciate it if you could address this matter and maybe we could move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Gina. All right. Next is GW McKay.
Please withdraw my request to speak, and I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. And those are all the items I have on general public comment. All the other speakers are on items, the rest of the items on the agenda. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Next is the approval of the consent calendar. These are items considered to be routine, and they will not be, and they will be enacted by one motion. There are no separate discussions on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request that specific items be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, I move.
Go ahead.
I move approval.
Okay. We have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion and a second. Yvette?
Counsel, excuse me. Councilmember Gracely?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. On to item nine. These are reports to council, just updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They're informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items. The first item we have is a report to council on the status of the Adult Community Center interior remodel project. Mr. Walter?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Jay Walters, Public Works Director, good evening tonight. We have some good news for you in regards to the Adult Community Center renovations. The first bit of good news is we're not back asking for more money. So, a good sign. So I will, I will ask Grace Lee, city engineer, to come up and make the presentation for you tonight, give you an update on the project and where we are as it stands now.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Gracely, city engineer. I'm happy to report that the ACC remodel is smoothly underway, and we're getting close to the final phases of construction. Tonight, I have various construction progress photos to share with the council, starting with what you see up there. From left to right, the first photo is of the exterior of the ACC. As you can see, prime coat painted, and we're ready for the painting of the exterior. The next photo is of the exterior deck. The repairs are underway. And the last photo is of the side of the ACC. We did some tree trimming and we had to remove one tree because of conflicts with utility. The existing windows in the ACC were found to be in very poor condition when the demolition began, and back in September, council appropriated additional funding to replace all 90, replace 93 windows with new energy-efficient double-pane windows. And you can see that some of them are in already. There's still much more to go in, but we have 93 windows that we're replacing. For the patio area, the underground utilities were also add-on items. We put in storm drain, electrical irrigation under the patio, and that's all in. The trellis columns are in, as you can see, and the ADA compliant ramp is completed. What's still needed is the concrete pad for the patio. For the interior work, from left to right, the first photo is of the front counter area, the drywall's in. And the second photo is of the elevator. We are going to do an upgrade of the mechanical, electrical components of the elevator, and that's underway. The next photo is of the brand-new walk-in cooler, which is already installed. And the last photo shows tiles going into the bathrooms. We had extensive mechanical work for the ACC. What you can see is new ductwork, new mechanical units. It fills a whole mechanical room and also the attic of the ACC. All this work is going to highly increase the energy efficiency for the entire building for heating and cooling, and we're approximately 75% complete with the mechanical work. Also, extensive electrical work went in. We did upgrades, and rough-in is complete. You can see some new light fixtures are installed, and our new code-compliant fire alarm system is operational. In terms of budget, back in September, council approved additional appropriation, $460,000 to cover the additional scope items and the unforeseen work, such as the window replacement. And we're, currently, we still have $30,000 remaining in contingency, and we don't anticipate any more unforeseen work. Basically, we're on the final phases of completion, so we don't anticipate any more surprises. No additional funding is needed. Schedule-wise, in December, we'll be continuing to finish up installing the windows, drywall patching, stucco and exterior trim. In January, we'll be pouring the concrete for the patio. The interior flooring would be replaced, painting, cabinets, interior trim, and completing the bathrooms. In February, by the end of February, we should be able to do punchless and closeout work so that the ACC should be moving ready by early March 2016. For the temporary location of the Senior Center, which is on San Carlos Avenue, that senior center location will close by the end of the year, and that's due to the Wheeler Plaza starting construction. Limited program will be relocated to the second-floor conference room, second floor of the library conference room. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions.
Okay. Thanks, Grace. I don't see any lights on, so I guess not. Thank you. All right. Next item, this is now a public hearing. We are, first item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the We are, first item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the general plan map and introducing an ordinance to amend the zoning district map to designate the property at 191 Lamor, APN 051-161-100, single-family, six DU slash AC, and RS-6, single-family. This is continued from the November 9 meeting. Mr. Savay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. In 2013, a property owners applied for an annexation to the city of San Carlos. And when you're in a single-family, next to a single-family residential zone, what our code says, our general plan and our zoning code says, that you have to come in pre-zoned for a period of two years in an RS3 zoning designation. And then after two years, you can apply to go to the zoning that surrounds you, which in this case is RS6. And so that's what is being requested of you this evening, and so I'm going to have Laura Russell, our senior planner, walk you through the details of this.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Collins and council members. Again, I'm Laura Russell with the Planning Division. The subject site is located at the end of Lamor Drive. It's at the southern edge of the city, so the properties to the south and the east are located within the county. And on the map at the right, you can see the site in red, and the adjacent county properties are shown in pink. The property is 12,932 square feet. It is currently developed with a single-family home and a detached garage. So the Google map is on the left, of course, and the zoning map is shown on the right. As Al mentioned, the site was annexed in 2013. That's when the property owners applied for that action. The primary reason they applied for the annexation was to create a clear entrance to the house from Lamor. Previously, historically, there had been an access from the south, from the county road, so they did have some issues in terms of emergency response and having a clear entrance to the home, and they really thought they were more part of the San Carlos community. So they have reoriented their house and done some remodeling, so there's a clear entrance from the Lamor cul-de-sac. So this is kind of the end of the two-year time period when they are eligible to apply for the code amendment. So it was just now in August of this year that they were able to come forward to the city council for this consideration. So the homeowners are requesting a general plan amendment and a zoning map amendment that would change the site from RS3 to RS6, or kind of in more common language, that's from the low-density residential designation, so that's three dwelling units to the acre, to the more common single-family zoning, so to the zoning that takes up the majority of the community. So on the map here, you can see that to the north and to the west, those properties are yellow. That's the RS6 zoning. And then the properties that are more in the brown color, that's the RS3 zoning. So right now, the site is not contiguous to any other RS3 properties. The proposed map amendment would change the development standards that would apply to the site. So the relevant standards from the zoning code are shown here. If the RS6 zoning is approved, the minimum lot size would be 5,000 square feet. The setbacks would be a little bit less restrictive, and the lot coverage maximum would be 50% instead of 35%. The applicants have indicated that they might want to replace their existing garage in the future with a larger and different configuration, but they have not applied for that project. So there are no other entitlements before you at this time, just the general plan amendment and rezone. If the rezone is approved, the minimum lot size would be 5,000 square feet, as I mentioned. So it could be possible sometime in the future for someone to apply for a lot split. So that would require a formal application for planning commission review, including a full analysis and considerations of the findings for approval. So for context, most of the nearby RS6 properties have areas that range from about 7,300 square feet to about 8,500 square feet. So this is a little bit zoomed-in version of the map for you to see the lot sizes that are immediately adjacent to the site. And again, there's not an application for such a lot split at this time. Just wanted to provide you that context. The Planning Commission adopted resolutions on September 21 recommending approval of these requests. Staff at that time received one email with questions related to what the applications meant, so we spoke with them, but we have not received any opposition from the project from any community members. So the Planning Commission and staff recommended the city council adopt a resolution amending the general plan and also introduce an ordinance to amend the zoning map to designate the property as single-family, which is RS6 zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and the property owners are here as well this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Bob?
What is the rationale for, it says your staff concurs with the, as you say here, Planning Commission and city staff recommend the city take the following actions. What's the rationale behind that?
There are no contiguous RS3 properties right now, so applying the RS6 zoning district in general plan standard would make it the same as its neighbors. So we see a value, and the general plan has policies that indicate that properties should be of the same designation when they're located near to each other.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I don't see any of their lights on, so we'll thank you for the moment. This is a public hearing, and we do have a speaker slip. Pamela Boyle.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Boyle, and I live at 191 Lamor Drive in San Carlos with my husband, Bruce. You heard a little brief history of our home. It was actually my family home where I grew up. The house was 50 years old, and three years ago, we purchased it from my mother after my father passed on. We have remodeled it extensively. Recently, we just had our solar completed and approved by the city and PG&E. Originally, as we said, as was said, the house was RS3 because we annexed into the city, and that was what the city designation was at that time. In terms of, of the reasons that we would like it to be RS6 is, as was said, to be in conformity with our neighbors, which are all RS6, and also because in the future, we would like to put in addition, we want to remove the current garage and put a, a, a single-family detached garage on the property as well. And currently, it's quite a tight turn going into the garage, and so we want to relocate it over by a few feet, and that, currently, we're in RS3 designation where the house sits, and the garage would be over a few feet, so it would need to be in the RS6 designation. I think that's everything, other than I want to introduce and thank, we have a couple of neighbors that are in support of our RS3 to RS6 designation. I want to thank and introduce Steve and Jeanette Avia for coming, and Chris and David Tom as well, who, as I said, are in support of our, our change from RS3 to RS6.
Great. Thank you, Pamela.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so. I don't see any lights on. Well, actually, I do, but, but I don't think that that's for you, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. What I'd like to do at this time, for those of you standing out in the lobby area, we have opened room 207, which is upstairs, it's in the back, and the TV is on there, and it is showing the meeting, so if you want an opportunity to sit down and watch the meeting, please take advantage of it. Okay. Is there anyone else? I don't have any other speaker cards for this item. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay. Bob?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Question of staff? I'm sorry. So there's a garage that the owner said that they wanted to possibly improve, so under the current designation, they couldn't do that?
They could make some improvements to the current garage, but they would not be able to configure it the way they would like to, in terms of its location on the lot, because of the setbacks.
Because of the setbacks?
Correct.
That's the issue?
That's based on their preliminary designs. They haven't submitted a formal application.
I understand, but I mean, so it's a technicality of setbacks. It's not, it's not space.
I haven't analyzed it to see if they would be over the lot coverage as well. That is possible.
It's possible, okay. If the garage is relocated or improved, is there, is the, let's assume that the house stays the same and the garage is improved or relocated, would the lot split still be possible?
It would be possible in the future if they applied for that, demolished the house.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So they'd have to demolish the house to have a lot split?
Yes.
So they couldn't, with their current house and an improved garage, could not split those lots?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any of the lights on, and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution...
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, we have to, I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
All right, Yvette.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes, and I thank Complimentarian Griselli for correcting me there.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash...
130.
130, a resolution of the City of San Carlos City Council, adopting a general plan map amendment for the property located at 191 Lamor Drive, APN 051-161-100, to a land-use designation of single-family, six DU per acre. I presume that means dwelling units per acre.
I second. Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Okay, Yvette?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, move...
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
1496.
1496, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos City Council, adopting a zoning district map amendment for the property located at 191 Lamor Drive, APN 051-161-100, to a designation of RS-6, single-family.
A second. Okay, any other discussion? Yvette?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, item 10B has been withdrawn, so we're moving on to item 10C. This is a consideration of an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, adopting amendments to the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, signs consisting of corrections, clarifications, and minor improvements. Mr. Savay again.
Before we begin here, Al, there's an announcement about seating. Oh, you made it.
Yeah, I did.
Sorry.
And there are seats up here if anybody wants to take them. And if anybody didn't hear the announcement, we have room 207 in the back, nice room, big TV in there, upstairs in the back. Okay, go ahead, Al.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, back in 2010, we adopted a completely new zoning ordinance, and in 2014, we started to fine-tune that zoning ordinance, made a number of changes to it, but signs wasn't one of the things that we changed back in 2014. So tonight, we're bringing some clarifications and a number of issues that had been changed in our sign ordinance for your consideration, and Lisa Porras, our principal planner, will walk you through those.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Lisa Porras, principal planner, and I will be presenting this item before you this evening. The Planning Commission and city staff are, in fact, recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend the sign regulations, which are part of the zoning ordinance found within Chapter 1822. Let's see, there we go. The proposed amendments are few. They are limited to corrections, clarifications, and minor improvements. If amended, outdated terms and old zoning classifications would be removed and replaced with correct terminology. If amended, the process for review and whether signs are reviewed by staff or the planning commission would be made more clear, and would also be consistent with other review processes outlined in the zoning ordinance for other permit types. And lastly, if amended, the application and requirements for sign programs, size of directional signage, allowances for additional construction signage, allowances for digital gasoline price signs, and the ability to address and restore damaged and vandalized signs would be provided for with these amendments. Specifically, within your pocket, I'd just like to note briefly that there are Red Line Strikeout version, didn't make it in the, in the version that was initially released, so hopefully you have a copy of the Red Line Strikeout version that was provided to you earlier today, which is located as, identified as Exhibit A of Attachment 1, and includes all of the proposed amendments. And these amendments essentially fall under five different categories. The first category is just simply to remove outdated terms, as I mentioned before. For example, there was reference to an architectural review committee, and that committee doesn't exist, and it's essentially the planning commission that performs that function. So that's a modification that's been made. We also wanted to clarify that sign programs can be not just multi-tenant types of comprehensive sign programs, but also apply to large projects on large sites. So for example, Home Depot, or perhaps our newest tenant, Lingso, could apply for a sign program as well. We also wanted to clarify that altered signs are also subject to design review, whether you're altering the sign face or perhaps the base structure. That's something that the city takes a look at, and it wasn't very clear in the ordinance, so we cleaned that portion up as well. And as I mentioned previously, we took a look at the review authority to approve signs, so either signs can be permitted at the director level or staff level or by the planning commission. We also wanted to improve regulations to allow slightly larger directional signs. Right now, directional signs are only limited to two square feet, and for some of the larger sites, having some flexibility to look at something larger made sense, so we're recommending that. We also want to allow more than one construction sign. Currently, our ordinance allows just one construction sign when projects are currently being developed, so as we contemplate development of Wheeler Plaza or Transit Village, it makes a lot of sense to allow more than just one, and that would be something that would be subject to the director level approval. And to be more business-friendly and to make it more safe during the switching of gasoline prices, we wanted to update our ordinance to allow for digital sign. Digital signage is not currently allowed, and it's very limited, but we wanted to make it clear that for gasoline price signs, it makes sense. So that's a modification that you'll see in the ordinance. And then, completely new, is to require that vandalized or damaged signs be restored or replaced, and that they seek a permit to do so. This is just an overall modification that allows the city some ability to require and address signs that have been damaged or dilapidated, and make sure that property owners and business owners maintain their signs in good condition. Outdated zoning classifications prior to the 2011 update have been replaced and inserted correctly with the new zoning district classifications. And then there was some confusion about, you know, where do you really go to find the size limits for signs erected onto buildings? So we changed a subheading to make it very clear where those would be located. So to approve the amendment of the zoning ordinance, the city council must determine that two criteria are met. The first is that the ordinance amendment is consistent with the general plan, and the second is the amendments are consistent with the purposes of zoning and promote the growth of the city in an orderly manner, and to promote and protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare. So staff has evaluated the amendments in light of this criteria and recommends that, and recommends that the findings could be made based upon general plan goals and policies that require excellence in design, the goals and policies that require high-quality signage through design materials and colors, in a manner that's complementary and compatible with the surrounding environment, and also the policy that directs the city to make amendments to the sign ordinance on an as-needed basis. On October 19, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution approving these amendments, making the recommendation to the council. So in light of the foregoing presentation, both the Planning Commission and city staff recommend the city council introduce an ordinance to amend San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 1822, consisting of these corrections, clarifications, and minor improvements. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Lisa. Nice break. Thanks, Lisa, nice presentation. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Lisa. Yes, it was a very good presentation, appreciate it. My one question at this point is, this revised ordinance, if it were adopted, would it either grant us additional authority, or in some fashion allow us to require more restoration or repair of the Carlos Club signs?
It would.
It would?
It would.
So the fact that we're adopting this, these changes, they're retroactively, there, there's not an exemption saying, oh, well, you only have to follow the earlier rules?
No, not at all. In fact, it would apply to that particular sign.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Cameron?
Mark, sorry, asked a question I wanted to ask, but maybe I'll ask one a little bit more in detail, which is, can you, so, for the benefit of the general public, last, last year, there was a big conversation on the city council about, the Carlos Club had become a new club called the Rail Club, and the owner had talked about taking down the Carlos Club sign, and we intervened and kind of kept it the way it is. And in the process, I believe what's been described as some of the neon tubing was taken out of the sign and potentially destroyed. Is that, is that your understanding?
I believe there was, my understanding of the situation is that sometimes that tubing got destroyed by vandalism, and that there were portions of it that had been damaged, and my understanding is that I believe the owner replaced some portions of that that were damaged. I'm only aware of one piece at the base, there might have been more.
I can speak to that a little, having talked to the owner at the time. There were some portions that were broken by vandalism, and those portions really no longer existed, and then at one time, as you're aware, they actually took pieces off, and those pieces, even though some of them were just partial pieces, we made them put back on, but the pieces that had actually been, you know, broken to shards and swept up and put in the dustbin were never replaced.
And so, this action tonight, does it require the owner to replace the pieces that have been vandalized?
The city would have the ability to address that with the owner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Matt?
The question I had regards to the digital signs, and I'm just wondering if there might be a different approach that we could take to that, to not make it specifically about gas stations. I would note that there is a digital sign currently, I think it's at the Walgreens on El Camino. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we could have an approach that might require something on the order of a conditional use permit, as opposed to just specifically targeting or making allowances for gas stations, just saying that, you know, if you want a digital sign, we have an allowance for that, you have to get a, I don't know if it would be a conditional use permit, I'm just grabbing that off the, you know, out of the toolbox, because I know we're going to be talking about that tonight, so I know that's something that we do. But is there any, any kind of approach that we could take that would be, like I say, open it up to more general usage, but still require, you know, public hearing and so forth, so that we don't just have a plethora of digital signs all over San Carlos?
Certainly, that could be something, if it was the intent of the council to, you know, want to, you know, move forward in that direction, that would be something that we could look at. We didn't open it up any further than what was, what was currently in the code, which has some limitations on those digital signage. We had been receiving some requests in the past from business owners at gasoline stations and saying it really makes it a lot, you know, more safe to have the digital, so we limit it to just that, but if it's the pleasure of the council to kind of open that up and maybe take some consideration to allowing digital signages with, under a conditional use permit process, that's something that staff could take a look at. But again, we didn't even approach that, because we didn't want to, you know, change very much in the signed ordinance.
So, give us some guidance, then, if we're going to discuss that, and that was a direction we wanted to take, what would our options be to, to approach that issue that way?
Well, certainly, the council could take a look at it in terms of what type of permit would be required. There's a list of different criteria for signage that is required to be reviewed by the planning commission. Perhaps this could be one of them, for digital signage. If the council felt it was appropriate to have additional oversight for that type of signage, we can look at it from that regard, and also require a higher level of review through a conditional use permit process.
All digital signage, including, including gas stations?
Yeah, I think the Walgreens signage was actually through a previous permit prior to the 2011 zoning ordinance update. I don't know if Al has any recollection, if it, if there was a specific discussion about digital signage in 2011.
So, our options then would be pass it as it's recommended, and then look at other types of digital signage at a later date? That would be one option, right?
We could bring it back. In fact, we are, we continue to fine tune the zoning ordinance, so there's, there'd be additional opportunity to bring that back.
And another way would be to just remove digital signage from any part of the changes tonight, and then have you bring it back, would be another option.
You could do that as well.
Yeah, okay, all right, just wanted to know.
Greg, you want to weigh in on this, please?
Yeah, I would, Mr. Mayor. As the council might recall, there was a very deliberate effort to address digital signs in the, when the current sign ordinance was put into place. I just wanted to underline that the, there are some serious legal issues regarding having a discretionary permit even for digital signs, so it...
Such as is in here?
No, no, to, to have a use permit process for, for digital signs, because there is an overall city ban on billboards, and digital signs start to, as they get bigger in size, start to be more and more flexible, and, and have the ability to have general advertising and other messages on them, and we want to make sure that our current ban on billboards is in play, and that's one of the reasons that it was extremely limited to the, to the gas station readout of prices. But as staff mentioned, if the council's direction is to come back and provide you with a report of all the implications of expanding the ability to put in signs by use permit or otherwise, I'd be glad to cooperate. It's just a bigger, I think it's just a bigger project than just bring it back with some, some new information.
Through the chair. So my concern, though, is that even by opening up Pandora's Box at all, and having something in our code that talks about digital signage, but it's specifically for gas stations, I could see, you know, business owners and property owners of other establishments coming forward and saying, hey, you, you did it for here, and it's kind of a free speech thing, and if you did it for there, why can't, why aren't you doing it for us? And that's why I would, to me, I don't know, we can discuss it as a council, but I'd like your take on it, before we discuss it, is, you know, before we even get to that point where somebody challenges us that way, why don't we just look at a sign, at a digital sign ordinance that's, that's very tight, and does require some kind of special permit process to, to get acceptance? That's, that's the reason I'm going, looking that direction.
That is definitely one of your options, to strike that part of the, of the proposed ordinance tonight, and then just go forward with the rest of the, of the suggested changes.
All right, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question I have is, I want to make sure I understand that, that even with the carve-out for allowing digital signage for gas prices at gas stations, I want to make sure I understand how that works, and let me walk you through an example. I'm not sure that they still do it, but for a long time, since I often frequented Shell gas stations, when you'd be pumping gas, they'd have this little video display screen, which would throw ads at you, you know, video ads. And, you know, part of the ads, towards the end, in each case, they tended to advertise the price of the gasoline that they were selling. I understand the safety argument of not having to send somebody up on ladders and whatnot to adjust the signage on a, on a manual digital sign, let's call it that, but I'm not particularly interested in opening a door where somebody says, well, yes, we're displaying gasoline prices, but we're also displaying a moving video image telling, you know, why you should stop into our gas station to, to do that, just because I think it's a driver distraction and potentially a danger if it starts becoming too prevalent. So does our ordinance segregate that out, and, and basically talk about, for lack of a better term, static digital signs, you know, frequently unchanged?
I'm just looking for the exact language, and I believe that it's in, it's a very limited, if, I think it says gasoline price, digitally displayed gasoline prices, not a digital sign, because that, again, starts to open it up to, and something other than the price of gasoline. That was the intent of the amendment.
And I would just like to add, it wasn't part of the amended section, but there is, under the prohibited sign subsection, a reference that animated signs are in fact prohibited.
So if one portion, if one section said you could have a digital sign of a certain kind, and another portion said it can't, you can't have animated signs, then you can't have an animated digital sign, which is what I was concerned about, even if it happened to display gas prices at some point. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, you got me all confused. Let me, let me ask, I don't know who answers it, Greg or, or Lisa, Matt brought up this idea of a conditional use permit for a digital sign. If we allow for these digital signs for gasoline prices only, do they need a conditional use permit now, or will it just be a use permit?
This would just be a permit at the staff level. So with, with this amendment in place, because it's just the price sign only, we feel that the level of review doesn't need to go to planning commission, so it's something that can be reviewed by staff.
And if we were to pursue Matt's idea of, you know, conditional use permits for other digital signs, when there's a conditional use permit, is there a fee involved to the, to the applicant?
There is.
And, does it vary, or is there a fixed price?
Well, it varies, so if it's, I mean, just as a conditional use permit is structured now, in fact, it may warrant a review of our fee schedule, because a conditional use permit that goes to the planning commission is near six, just over $6,000. If it's a minor use permit that goes to the zoning administrator, it's in the neighborhood of about 2,000 or just under 2,000, so there is a difference. With signs that go, that are required to be reviewed by staff, they're less than 1,000. If they go to planning commission, they're, I believe, just under 1,000 or about 1,000, so they're a little bit more. But if we specifically tie it to a conditional use permit, that would be a fee that we would need to develop.
Is 6,000 the most, or?
That's the most.
That's the most.
That's the most, for any conditional use permit that we have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I don't have any speaker slips on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Yvette?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to introduce ordinance number...
1497.
1497, an order to the City of San Carlos, adopting amendments to the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, signs consisting of corrections, clarifications, and minor improvements.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Matt, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to see some discussion by the council about what it is I was asking staff about. My preference would be to remove anything about digital signage for tonight's action, and take it up at a later date, because even though it's limited to pricing for gas stations, I could see us being approached by, for instance, you know, we have motels in town who may want to display their pricing. I've seen that done before in other, you know, towns and cities and whatnot, where, you know, they'll, they'll have either a vacancy sign, and they might have a vacancy sign, or, and what the room prices are, you know, listed. So I could, I could just see it being challenged, and I would like to give staff time to research that and, and just come back with that item. It may be that they bring it back exactly as it is, but just to give staff some time to study that, look at it, consider the ramifications of, like I said earlier, opening up Pandora's Box, which is, which is what I think we're doing in a, in a, in a way. And I'd also like to see that, rather than it, even if we do have digital signage, I would like to be there, for there to be some consideration where we could either do it through a conditional use permit, or whatever staff would recommend, so that it's not something that just gets approved at the staff level, but that there would be a public hearing on, on something of that nature.
So your concern with the way this is proposed, is that you're gonna have, we're gonna have other establishments that think that the gas stations are getting some sort of special treatment, or it's unfair that they can't do their own?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Cameron, or, I'm sorry, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to follow up on, on Matt's comment. I am fine with the, the proposed language the way it is. I personally, I agree with Matt in the sense that I wouldn't mind if staff, if they haven't already, looked into whether there are other types of businesses like gas stations that have, again, using the term I came up with before, static digital signs, where there is some personnel, danger to personnel of going up to change the, the display values, and that it's done regularly enough that that's an issue. And if we want to come back and amend the, the language at a later date to include those, I'm fine with that. The, the gas station issue does seem to make sense to me today, and that's why I'm happy to support it today, but I don't mind staff studying it further, and perhaps bringing some of the other things back.
Okay, Bob?
I concur with, hello, I concur with Councilmember Olbert on that. I think we should pass this the way it is, and I have no problem bringing back some other items, but I think it puts the limit on it with just, it just, it eliminate, well, doesn't eliminate it, but it pretty much says what we'll allow, and if people want to come and add on, then we'll have a, you know, a hearing and talk about it. But I think, let's get this done, otherwise, technically, I guess there's at least one gas station I know that's going to be in violation, because they put, they remodeled their, at Holly and El Camino, and they remodeled it, and they put up their, their, their sign. So, I mean, I think we should pass this, the way it's done, and the staff's done a great job in, in putting in a lot of effort here, and then, you know, I have no problem revisiting it again.
Matt, did you want to add something?
Yeah, well, so what I'm seeing is three councilmembers that are willing to see it back on the dais, to look at the digital signs, and, and, you know, my, again, I just want to be clear, my concern is not, has nothing to do with what the gas stations are asking for, which is safety issue. My thing is, is, you know, free speech rights could be challenged by a different property owner and a different business, even specifically to signage that just allows pricing, and I don't want to open us up to that challenge unduly.
Good point. Okay, I don't see any of the lights on, I think we're probably ready for a vote.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10D. Hang on while I get organized again. This is an adoption of an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code, Section 658, 58A, imposing interim zoning on formula businesses in the historic downtown core area, the 1100 and 1200 block of San Carlos Avenue, and the 600, 700, and 800 blocks of Laurel Street, requiring a conditional use permit for new formula businesses. Mr. Savay?
Good evening, once again, Mayor and members of the city council. Recent property ownership changes in downtown have prompted San Carlos residents and members of the city council to express concern that formula businesses, or as we might call them chain stores, that they might displace small local businesses and take away from the diversity of businesses in the downtown, and its small-town charm and character. The intent and purpose of the ordinance... There we go. The intent and purpose of this ordinance is to require a conditional use permit for any new formula business in the historic downtown retail area, to ensure that the quality of our, and character of our downtown is maintained. The COP would be considered by the planning commission to review the merits and appropriateness of the business that would come into town, or want to come into town, and ensure that the community in downtown is protected. The ordinance, this ordinance would be temporary, and it, it would give us some time to evaluate it more, and come up with some other considerations and findings that could be considered as part of a use permit process. For purposes of this urgency ordinance, we're defining... of this urgency ordinance, we're defining formula retail businesses as a retail business or restaurant with 10 or more locations in the United States, and these are businesses that have a standardized look and operations. In terms of the location of the, for the urgency ordinance, we are referring to the area of the historic downtown retail core, and that would be the 6, 7, and 800 blocks of Laurel Street, and the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue. You can see it up there on the screen. Currently, currently, if a permitted formula business wanted to come into San Carlos and go into downtown, all they would need is a building permit, if they wanted to do interior improvements, a business license, and maybe a sign permit. If the ordinance is adopted, all new formula businesses would be required to apply for a conditional use permit, have a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and the Commission would have the final say as to whether the, they could either conditionally approve, they could deny, or just approve a business coming into town. Their decision could be appealed to the City Council. The City Council can extend the urgency ordinance for 10 months and 15 days. You need to do that, you need to start that process within this 45-day period, however. And so we'll need to hold another public hearing if you move forward with this project in the next 45 days. We wanted to give you some examples of formula businesses, different kinds of examples, and these are some examples in and around the historic part of our downtown, that would be considered formula-based, based on the definition that we've suggested to you this evening. So as you can see, there's a good number of these businesses in and around the 6, 7, 800 blocks of downtown. Here's a few more. As you go down the list, and you get, in terms of lessening the number of locations, Patsy's, Footwear Incorporated, Le Boeuf, and then not meeting the definition, Blue Line Pizza, they have seven locations, and moving down to places like Spiteria. So in terms of the recommendation this evening, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt an urgency ordinance. However, the city manager may have some additional guidance for the City Council. And of course, we're available to answer any questions. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malpe.
Thanks, Al. There's just sort of one procedural issue that the council needs to be aware of in adopting this urgency ordinance, and that's the 45 days. The first bite that the council has at this is 45 days. You can't go any further than that at this point. But 45 days is a little problematic with the calendar right now, in that it doesn't get us to that first meeting in January. And so the council will need to, if you choose to introduce this ordinance tonight, you'll need to extend it at your very next council meeting. And we would likely be suggesting that you extend it for 120 days, allowing us enough time to do the study and review at the staff level, prepare the necessary documents for review at a Planning Commission meeting, before ultimately this came back within that 120-day timeframe to the City Council for consideration. So just so you're aware of the, sort of the unique nature of this process, because of how the meetings are following in the holiday timeline.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Jeff. I have a number of questions. I'm not sure I'll get through all of them before I, for staff, before I turn this over. I may ask the mayor to give me another turn at the bat a little later. But my first question, Al, is quite simple. What's the urgency? You know, I was on the council when we had brought before us the emergency action, or the rapid ordinance change that we did for the Landmark Hotel project. And the Landmark Hotel project was one which, there was basically another bidder in the wings that would have bought some property, and basically altered the destiny of some land in a way that would likely have prevented the community from realizing a dream it had had for a higher-end hotel for decades. And incidentally, also had a significant financial impact on the city's, and the community's future finances because of the transit occupancy tax. What's the urgency about this?
Well, I think one of the points of urgency is that we've seen a fairly large building in the 600-block change hands after decades of one ownership. And the ownership that had owned that building, and this is the area just to the north of Clock Tower Music, there's several businesses that are in there. You, I guess, Mi Ranchita, those kinds of businesses over there. And that's a fairly large building, number of maybe four or five different businesses that are there now. And so they would be displaced as part of an upgrade to the building that the new owner would like to do. And I think that this has just raised the issue in the community. It's raised the issue, you hear it around town. I understand that, you know, staff has gotten calls. I'm sure the City Council has talked to different people throughout the community. So I think it's raised the issue in terms of protecting the character of the downtown in the community. So I think that's the urgency, and knowing that all these businesses will eventually change over in the very near future.
Help me out, though, kind of following up on that. I think, if I remember correctly, essentially, within the last few years, anyway, the property, pretty much opposite on the east side of Laurel Street, also turned over. I mean, I spent a lot of time at the Pete's, just because I like their coffee, and I like the outdoor, the ambiance where I can sit. That used to be a Blockbuster Video rental place. There were a couple of stores to the north of that, where I guess Patchy's Pizza is now, and I forget the other store, it's got some cool stuff in it. I don't remember, I haven't been in there too often. But that's turned over and was substantially remodeled. I don't remember exactly what was there before, but it was a fairly significant change. So I guess what I'm getting at is, it seems like these kind of building turnovers, ownership turnovers, happen reasonably regularly. And so, again, I'm trying to understand what the urgency is.
And I think that you're right. There's somewhat of a regularity to these things, but I think that perhaps there's been a tipping point. You know, those businesses, they did a great job. I mean, they're great businesses, good remodels to those buildings, but perhaps there was a tipping point in the community where they saw another large building in the historic core changing hands, and perhaps it's that.
Okay. I'll mention as an aside, I'm not a big believer in tipping points. I think it's an overused term, but that's sort of not the subject for tonight. What's the, what logic or analysis would you say is behind setting the, and I know we have to have thresholds in these things, but setting the threshold of 10 outlets, let me call it, to define what's a formula store. In all honesty, Al, every time I see the number 10, I always go, that must be because we have 10 fingers. You know, it's not anything more substantive than that, but maybe it is. And so I'd like to understand where that's coming from.
Well, part of it is, there's a couple of components to that. One is, we always look at what other cities are doing in the area, and we want to be fair and competitive in the marketplace. So if you look at some of the other cities in the area, one of the most recent cities to adopt a formula-based ordinance was Palo Alto for California Avenue. And they chose 10 in the U.S. Now, some other cities either go more, you know, depending on the scale and size of the city, too. They may go, for instance, San Francisco has 11. You know, why they picked 11? Not quite sure, but.
Many people in San Francisco have 11 fingers.
Because they're San Francisco. Wanted to be different. And Los Gatos is a little less than that. But if, I think if we, this is a good example on the screen here. If we look at businesses not meeting that definition, we have Blue Line Pizza with seven locations. So we were, I assume the seventh location, it was one of the newest Blue Line pizzas. And then if you look at all the businesses underneath, they have a few locations. Would you consider these something akin to a Starbucks, or a Pete's that has hundreds of locations? So you sort of have to draw the line somewhere. So one is, we want to be competitive and in balance with the other cities, so that there's some certainty when they come to San, when new businesses want to come to San Carlos, they know what they're dealing with. And the other is, if you look at the types of businesses here on the screen, you'll note that, you know, there is sort of a division in terms of these businesses and the businesses that we have in our downtown, going from like 7 to 12. So in the middle, there's 10.
Last question, in fact, I'm glad you put this chart, this particular page back up. I'm also trying to get an understanding of what it is that we are really aiming to do here with this proposed ordinance. Because, for example, when I looked at your first couple of pages of businesses that have lots of outlets that are in San Carlos, I've sort of ran down the list, and I was like, yeah, I see lots of people going into that. They obviously really like that. I see lots of people going into that. They really like that. I don't recognize all of these, I'm embarrassed to say. Nothing bunt cakes. I would have no idea. They have 162 franchises, outlets around the nation. That's actually pretty impressive. They're doing pretty well. But the, this ordinance that we're proposing would essentially have raised the, or created the possibility of blocking all of these businesses from operating in San Carlos. We would have said, well, we may love you here, but, you know, you can't come in, because there's too many of you. And I'm trying to understand, I don't think that's what we meant, we're meaning to do, because I think a lot of people like these. That's why they're successful. So what is it that we're trying to do? Is it look and feel, more look and feel, as opposed to the particular businesses, or what?
And that may be more a policy discussion at the council level. However, I think that, you know, this isn't intended to block a business. It's intended to provide greater discretion for the city, and to raise it up to public discourse at a public hearing before the Planning Commission. So that's, the intent is just to say it would require a conditional use permit, and we do that for a number of different businesses in town.
But let me push back on that a little bit. I mean, the point is that if it requires a conditional use permit, then there is a discussion and a separate decision point other than, oh, by the way, you comply with all of our other zoning rules, okay? But you have to come in and, you know, if you come before the Planning Commission, you have to convince a majority of five people that, yes, even though you have 162 openings, you should be allowed to open your business here. And that, again, gets back to this notion of, it seems like we're setting the stage to block businesses that I think a lot of people in town would go, wait a minute, I actually like that business. I'm glad it's here. It actually adds to the charm and the diversity, and whatever it is that we love about downtown San Carlos, it's part of it. And yet, we're potentially setting the stage saying, well, no, we actually didn't want it. And I'm just confused. I don't quite understand what we're trying to do.
Yet I think that may be.
A policy discussion.
Yeah, a policy discussion.
Thank you, Al.
All right. Cameron?
Thanks, Al. I wanted to ask a couple of questions that maybe sort of build on some of the things that Mark was asking. So that building that changed hands in the 600-block of Laurel, that's the building where Plantation Coffee is, is that right?
Yes.
And are you aware of any chain store interest in that building?
Yeah, I've, you know, I've heard that there's some interest, yes.
Can you speak to it, or no? Is it private information, or?
No, I'm not quite sure if it is. You know, it's not written anywhere.
Okay, all right.
Through the chair, I've heard.
I don't want to sound like I'm avoiding something. Maybe the property owner would want to talk about that.
I will say, through the grapevine, of other people have heard, but I've heard that one of the potential bidders on that coming in there is Jamba Juice.
Yeah, yes.
In terms of your, you know, previous comment about a tipping point, as the, you know, Community Development Director, how would you characterize the level of permit activity in the city for new businesses coming into town, and for new development?
Well, there's a lot of activity. I mean, it's an unprecedented amount of activity. The economy's good, the interest rates are low. You know, people want to do things with their property. So yes, I would say that there's a good deal of permit activity.
Okay. And if I can add to, just sort of building on your question, Cameron, I think, you know, in addition to sort of the permit activity that's happening, a lease can expire at any time. And we're not privy to when leases in private buildings downtown are expiring. So regardless of buildings changing hands or whatnot, you could have businesses changing hands at any moment.
And I can sort of speak to the sort of policy goals when we get to a motion and discussion. But I did want to ask, in terms of the urgency, if the, you know, if the staff were to study this for several months and bring it back, you know, first part of next year, and in the interim, a chain store got a permit, set up shop, and then, you know, let's say six months from now, we said, hey, you know, any chain store that wants to move into downtown would have to go for public review. Would that apply to the chain store that had, would apply retroactively? Would we have any recourse to essentially say, well, if you take Jamba Juice for an example, if we said, hey, Jamba Juice, we've now been thinking about this for six months, we want to have a public hearing to decide whether or not you get to stay, can we have a public hearing on that, or not?
I don't think so. I think if you, for instance, a building permit is a contract, if they got a permit to go in the building?
Yeah.
Basically, I think from, and I see our attorney is talking to the city manager, but if they get a permit, that's a contract. So essentially, the city's allowing them to occupy the building.
Greg, did you want to weigh in?
Give us some clarification.
I would. Just to make sure I understand the question, what you're asking is, if we passed the, this urgency ordinance tonight?
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, you know, Mark was asking, what's the urgency, right?
Okay.
So let's imagine we didn't do anything tonight.
Okay.
And then, six months from now, after we study it, we say, hey, you need a conditional use permit for chain stores. And then in the interim, while we're studying it, Jamba Juice set up shop. Could we, could we say, hey, well, now we've decided we wanted to look at this, could we do anything about that?
No, we would not be able to retroactively go back to the, a business that had received its entitlements to.
Okay. And then, lastly, Al, I wanted to ask, let's, if we do pass this tonight, I think you said in your presentation, the plan is that staff is going to study it and come back with kind of a formal ordinance. What kind of outreach are you going to do as part of the study process? And to Mark's question about the definition of what a chain store is, do you expect that to change? Is that one of the things you're going to be asking folks about?
Yeah, I think that's something that we can, you know, get some feedback on in the community. In terms of outreach, I think that what we'd like to do is reach out to the business owners themselves, the property owners, work through the Chamber of Commerce. We also have an Economic Development Advisory Commission. Bring it to them. We'd like to bring it to them before we bring it to the Planning Commission. So, and I think we'd like to keep some people notified through, you know, we have e-notify, we have other, you know, website information that we can provide. So we can make this very public, and make it a public dialogue, and have lots of opportunities for people to weigh in.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks, Cameron. Matt?
So my first question, just to clarify, I think Jeff addressed this already earlier with his comments, but since we're, you know, when we introduce an ordinance, it sits there for how many days? 30 days? 30. So in this case, with an emergency ordinance, it's immediate, right?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure I understood that clearly, and everybody else did, too. The, so the question I had, I'm looking at your bullet points that was in your presentation, the purpose of the urgency ordinance, and because I was the council member that brought this up as an issue, having heard about the change of ownership in the building that's already been mentioned, this, to me, is not the direction that I was thinking of going at all. So what I'd like to know from staff is, do you guys see this as the end-all to the issue? Or, let me read you something I wrote, which kind of addresses what I was more thinking about. And that is, so I put another bullet point here, to allow time for staff, the Planning Commission, and the City Council to consider other measures to protect the small businesses, providing an important element of the historic downtown core's economic diversity. And that's what I'm after, is something that would protect those businesses, and if not necessarily protect them, at least give them a situation where, when there is a change of ownership, they have some fair play in the game. Because, you know, somebody said earlier on this dais that, well, we don't want to get involved in, you know, property rights and so forth, which is, you know, they see it as a civic right, I guess, which it is to a degree. But we all have to admit, while we have rights to our property, we just looked at something tonight earlier that restricts the use of a property. We just zoned at R6, which means there's certain setbacks, and height limits, and lock coverages. So we do that all the time. We can't claim that we're. We can't claim that we're, you know, snowy white here, having no impact whatsoever as a government to people's property. So when I look at lease, the leasing of a property, when you sign a lease, you have property rights too, as a leaseholder. And you're also part of the economic mix for the landowner. The landowner is benefiting ostensibly from leasing the property to you. And you're making your payments every month and they're, you know, if they're, know what they're doing, they're making a profit off of that. That's fair. But for them to just come along and sell the property or somehow switch the game, the rules of the game, such that a business that's been in their property for 20 years, you know, one of the businesses I'm thinking of in the downtown is going to be affected by this change of ownership in the building we're talking about, that business has been there in one fashion or another through different owners, but for, I think, about 33 years. So the property owner has benefited from that lease for 33 years. Is it fair for them to have taken that benefit? One of the things that's on the table is a change of the game and to not absorb any of the detriment that is on the table, that's being put to one of the people, or, you know, the business owner in this case, who's part of that mix? Is that fair? And I think that's the thing that we ought to be looking at. This, to me, doesn't address it. This, to me, just says, you know, we like having small businesses in the downtown and we want to make it a little bit more of a public affair when a chain store wants to come into town, into the downtown. Well, that may be a good thing to do, but I don't see that being the end-all to the issue. So that was a question. I'm sorry it was so long-winded, but the question is.
I was going to say, can I ask you? Clarify that, please.
So the question was, do you see this as the last measure in the issue that I brought up? Or are there, should we have another bullet point here that says, we can look at this tonight, but we need to look at other things as well?
So you brought up a couple of items that we've been looking into. You know, just to kind of characterize them, I'd say one was sort of rent control for commercial businesses was an idea that you had brought up on the dais. And the other had to do with notification on, or I'm sorry, it was a restriction on month-to-month leases. And our research right now indicates that the city wouldn't have the legislative authority over either those areas. But one area that we do believe you could regulate would be notification to long-term leaseholders, up to like 120 days advance notice if a lease were ending on a long-term leaseholder. And that's one area that the staff's continuing to explore that is a possibility that we could bring back to the council next year. It's not necessarily related to this urgency ordinance specifically, and it doesn't need to be part of this, but it would be another potential tool that, you know, the council could put in that toolbox addressing the same type of concern.
Through the chair. Go ahead.
So one of the other items that I believe I had tossed out there, and I didn't toss out anything with any, you know, like, I really think this is what we should do. You mentioned rent control. I'm not a big fan, but I think I did mention it. But one of the other things that I think that I think would be fair to look at, if we could, is, you know, the state used to have, when we had redevelopment agencies, they had a law that said for redevelopment agency is going to move out all these leaseholders, that you've got to give them an opportunity to look at applying for relocation costs. Is that something that we could do?
That is, there's a state law that, in doing the research in response to your questions before councilman Grocott, that prohibits local commercial rent control. It's very explicit. It's one of those preemption statutes where the state basically banned it in 1987. It's been a longstanding law. That type of relocation benefits, I think, starts to touch on the lease, the lease that the landlord and the tenant are entering into, as opposed to the notice provision, which is specifically carved out in that law, that we could enact an ordinance that requires, I think it's, I may be wrong on the number of days, but it's a, there's a lead time that allows for negotiation between the landlord and the tenant when a lease is about to expire. But that's about the limit of what the state law allows local government to do with regard to commercial rent control. And it's very broadly defined in the statute. It's not been tested in the courts. It was, it's just a, I think the statute was intended to end the discussion of local commercial rent control and that the state legislature made of numerous findings about economic vitality and attracting businesses. And I'd be glad to share that with you offline about what the statute says.
So if I heard you correctly, what you're saying, you've hit on two areas where you could require the property owner to give due notice to the leaseholder. One would be planning to change the, you know, I'm going to remodel my building and you're going to have to move out and so forth, so I have to give you 120 days' notice. The other would be, I'm planning on raising the rents or whatever on month-to-month businesses, and I have to give you a certain amount of notice on that as well.
No, the enabling legislation just creates a window of where the landlord is required to provide a notice, hey, your lease is going to expire at this time.
I see.
And then it provides a, an opportunity and a process for the landlord and the tenant to negotiate a new lease, but it does not speak to what happens when the lease expires.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Al, the conversation that was going on with Matt and you and Jeff and Greg raised an interesting question for me, which I hadn't really thought about before. I recall from some of our earlier discussions where the city has been the property owner for residential properties, apartment buildings, apartments, that there is a state law that requires we provide compensation to the renters if we do something that causes them to have to move out, like remodeling the building, tearing it down, selling it to somebody else. That's, I see you nodding your head. That's correct, right?
Correct, yes. That's right.
Is there, if a private apartment building owner, in other words, not a public agency, were to come in and say, or somebody buys an apartment building and says, you know what, I'm going to tear this down and rebuild it as an apartment building, and do they, in that case, have to provide compensation to the renters? In other words, is it, is it looking towards, hey, I'm a renter? Or is it looking to the property owner as a public agency?
Yeah, we have to do it because we're a public agency, but I believe that it would be covered in the lease. Greg, is that correct?
So it's a matter of contract.
It's a matter of a contract between those two individuals.
Matter of contract, not a matter of law.
Yes.
Is that correct, Greg?
You know, there, there is a, you know, in some cities on residential tenancies and what you're talking about, there is this, in San Francisco is one of the cities, it's a charter city that has rent stabilization ordinances that speak to some of the issues you're talking about that deal with the status of the tenant. Like, if the tenant's elderly, different rules apply. So it's a very complicated area, but I think it's, when we're talking about commercial leases, it's a market-based lease situation. When it's residential, there's a whole body of law that's different. And then I think the first part of your question on commercial tenancies, when a public agency acquires property and there are existing leases, we do have to provide some relocation, have a provision for relocation unless it's waived by the tenant.
Well, you and I perhaps will have a further educational discussion, educational for me, not for you, about this. I'll just mention in passing then that I'm willing to consider, you know, having staff come back and look at the idea that developed that to some of Matt's earlier comments about the notification period, about enacting something like that on the commercial side. But in all honesty, and meaning no disrespect whatsoever to our commercial business, you know, to our business operators in San Carlos, if I was going to look to start to do something to ensure compensation for people when ownership of the actual property changed hands, personally, I would look first towards our renters, not the, you know, the residential renters. I'd want to look there first. That's just me. That's sort of my priority. But as I said, the notion of notification, I'm open to discussing that.
Okay. Thanks, Al. All right, this is a public hearing. I do have some speaker cards. The first is David Tom. David, are you here?
Looks like he left.
We lose David?
He's in there.
Okay, sorry. Second is Susan Hannah.
It is certainly a pleasure to speak with you. I'm a very proud business owner, but I'm so small, I didn't even make the chart. I have one location. It's arranged for comfort at 790 Laurel Street. Last Thursday, I got a phone call from the local paper asking my opinion about this matter. And I am very opinionated. I am very pleased to have taken my storefront just out for a stroll at the farmer's market five years ago and saw the for lease sign. And on the spot, I said, that's it. That's what I'm doing next. After spending 20 years in the field of ergonomics, I knew how I wanted to do it and how it should be done. And I have enjoyed so much having a relationship, not only with this community, but I get customers that come from all over the Bay Area, actually all over the country, because my skills are a little bit unique. One of the things that I enjoy the most is strolling down the street, seeing other business owners. We give one another a little 10% off here and there. We're a community. I'm a community with my customers. I'm a community with someone who just was strolling down the street from the Samtrans building, and they have become a regular customer of mine, as is the city of San Francisco, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space I've been doing business with for 20 years, since I've been in the industry. I feel very strongly about this. And I happened to get a call Saturday morning from a friend who said, hey, did you hear KCBS was doing a story about San Carlos and the potential for big box stores coming in? And I'll tell you, it would just be a crying shame. We would be vanilla. We could be anywhere USA. Instead, when people are coming in for an appointment, I say, plan some time, because it's a great little town. Have a meal, go shopping. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, next we have Karen Johnson. You know, I know that there are lots of comments that people make that other people are appreciative, but we've got a lot more speakers coming up. And if we could, please refrain from applause, no matter how much you support somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. I'm a resident here. Hello, fellow residents and councilmember and mayor. I came here tonight specifically for this because I moved from Burlingame, where downtown is uncomfortably crowded with too many people and cars, to the walking friendly and personal shops that make up the comfortability of San Carlos. This is clearly an issue of interest to many people, because we've all shown up here tonight to see what's going on during a holiday week. And I really feel that this ordinance would give you the opportunity to put a stop on anything that may happen in anything above what we consider now 10 stores or whatever of these big chain stores. Gives you the opportunity to stop it now, instead of going back to say, ooh gee, what happened in the last 45 days before, you know, February 1st, when we all take a look at it again? So it just gives you the opportunity. It's just a window to give you that opportunity to do it. San Carlos was one of the first cities established on the peninsula with individuals bringing their individuality to here in San Carlos. And that's why I'm here tonight to tell you, let's keep it individual. Let's keep what we've got going here and let's not bring any more big, big stores. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. I don't have any more speaker cards for this, but would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second. Okay. Yvette?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, let's put my glasses on. Wherever the hell I went. Anyway, make a motion to introduce ordinance number?
1498.
1498, urgency ordinance pursuant to the government code, section 65858A, imposing interim zoning on formula businesses in the historic downtown core area, 1100-1200 block of San Carlos Avenue and the 600, 700, and 800 blocks of Laurel Street, requiring conditional use permit for new formula businesses. I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before we take councilmember comments, Mr. Rubens, did you have some guidance for us on this?
I just wanted to, it's mentioned in the staff report, but I just wanted to make it clear for the council and the public that urgency ordinances require four votes of the council to be enacted, and they take place immediately.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an interesting one for me. I'm still mulling over, I've been thinking about this for, ever since the issue first came to my attention, about what I'll do here tonight, vote-wise. And the reason I say that is, you know, I asked the questions of staff, where I just feel that this is a not terribly well-thought-out response to a problem which may or may not be that big of a problem, and that people may have very strong differences of opinion about what, in fact, the problem actually is. We heard some speakers talk about big box stores, which I don't think is what the issue is here. We've heard other people talk about various other things. And, you know, my preference personally would be, I'd be happy to see this studied. I'd be happy to see an active discussion that would culminate in making some changes to ordinances. But to enact an urgency ordinance, that's the thing that I'm kind of, I'm kind of really hung up on, as to whether that's the right way to go. You know, there are some things that, when I look at it and talk to people, that I think we ought to be, we don't have in place for Laurel Street that, in the downtown core, that I think we ought to have. We don't really have regulations on look and feel. It's quite possible for somebody to come in and propose putting in a store, or they'd be perfectly complying with the rules. They could put in a store with some incredibly garish and out-of-place color scheme and design and whatnot, which would really throw off the entire commercial neighborhood. Other communities have rules governing that, and we don't. Those kind of rules, I think, would make a lot more sense to look at doing. But this one is, this one is kind of perplexing. I'd rather see it studied than actually enact an urgency ordinance.
Thank you, Mark. Matt?
So I don't mind going forward with the ordinance, because it just gives us a, you know, pause in the action. I'm not sure it's the answer, as I said before when I was asking staff. But if I'm hearing Mark correctly, and I've said myself that I'd like another bullet point on this staff report that says, you know, staff will continue to look at it, that, you know, I'm willing to vote yes on this, but I'd like to see another council member step forward and say, yeah, let's have this studied further by the staff, because it takes three of us to do that, and give some direction to staff to, you know, what those items might be. One of the things that also comes to mind is it's already, you know, it's in here in the staff report. It labels the downtown core as a historic area. Now, I think that's just our terminology. We don't have anything that puts that into any type of ordinance or law. There's nothing legislative about it. And I suppose that's another way we could approach this, is say, this is a historic downtown core. It includes this mix of businesses. And when we have changeovers, we'd like to see, you know, some percentage of this mix of businesses, including small businesses that are family-owned or, you know, maybe there's three, four, five, how many locations, you want to say, it's regional in nature or something of that nature. So if there's interest on the council of one more member of having staff continue this, that's what I'd like to see.
All right. Well, why don't we, we'll come back to that.
Sure, go on, Aaron.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to my colleague, Mr. Olbert, I think that we need to do this, and it gives us time. It doesn't hurt anything. We've got 45 days, and if we extend it out, as was possibly suggested by staff, it gives us a lot of time to study things. And I think... And I think if we don't, something untoward could happen, and we'd go, "Gee, I wish we had done that then. How'd we let that?" We don't have any control at the moment, to very much extent, as long as they follow the specific rules. So I'd be in favor of this, to give us some time to think about it. Relative to my colleague on my right, Mr. Grocott, it's a difficult issue when you get into the real estate part, you know, and it's always a tough one for me. That's one where I have a lot of difficulty fading into. I think you could almost, I guess you could turn it around and say, "If I was a landlord, and this ordinance was there, and I knew I had to have a conditional use permit for somebody to come in, I might be more likely to go, 'Okay, maybe I like that store that's there,' and maybe give them, possibly, possibly, a better break, knowing that at least I have a rental, a unit rented, as opposed to going through the process of a conditional use permit, which could take months, you know, in government speak, and meanwhile, I'm losing all that revenue." So in a way, you could almost turn it around and say, "This is a positive thing." So anyway, that's where I'm coming down. So I'll be supporting this item tonight.
All right. Mark?
Yeah, I just want to, something Bob said reminded me of a point that I may not have made clear enough before. I found Al's list of the businesses that make up the downtown core of San Carlos currently very interesting, because if I were to poll the average person who walks up and down Laurel Street, lives in San Carlos, about what gives Laurel Street its charm, I doubt very much that they would pick, you know, the Chase Manhattan Bank. Nothing wrong with Chase. I don't bank there, but, you know, banks don't tend to do a lot for people. But, you know, you would find, I think, a fair number of people who would say Plantation Coffee. You'd also find a fair number of people who would say Pete's Coffee. Pete's Coffee tends to have some very strong supporters. You'd also find people who'd say, "Yeah, you know, nothing but cakes." So I guess what I look at is, again, the question I asked of, what's the problem and the imminence, the urgency of the problem we're looking to solve? The existing process down there, the existing marketplace, in fact, has not generated what it is that we're fearing it's going to generate. And absent that, that's where I don't see the issue of the need to do an urgency action.
Okay. Matt?
It wasn't raised tonight, but it was raised as an issue the last time we were discussing this, and that was, you know, just the idea of property rights and constitution and so forth. And I just wanted to say that this is not a new issue. If you look at American history, this was an issue in Salem, Massachusetts, back a long time ago, because when they established Salem, they said, "We're establishing this community. We have these businesses, and we're not going to allow a new cobbler to come in until the cobbler that's there dies and goes." So I just wanted to put that, you know, what we're doing in a historic perspective. I know Bob always laughs and chuckles, you know, because I'm a reader of history and I like these things, but it's true. It's not, this is not a brand-new issue. I'm sure if you even went back to European times, you could find this issue. It's something that we're facing, and to Mark's comment that he doesn't see the urgency, the urgency is because, yes, you did see the antique store, gone. That's the one you couldn't remember. And, yes, it took out sort of an ugly business that was a chain, that when it went in, we all said, "How did that happen?", which was Blockbuster. So we kind of got a good, and some might argue a bad, when that whole changeover went down. But, you know, how long ago was that, that that took place? They just finished putting in the new pizza place, and Pete's, and so forth. That was just recently done, and now we're looking at a business, a block of businesses. It's not just the plantation. It goes from the plantation all the way down to CoAmerica Bank, that could get blown out, and you see a change. That, to me, is pretty speedy in terms of change in San Carlos, and that's the reason for the urgency.
Okay. In the interest of time and the fact that there's all these people waiting so patiently this entire evening, I'd like to kind of wrap this up. Cameron, I've been kind of saving you for last, because you have, you've been chief proponent of this, so I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to sort of talk about why I proposed this. You know, I think that Laurel Street and the downtown is more than just a shopping district. It's kind of the living room of our town. It's where I spend a lot of time with our family, with my family. And it's a place that is unique. It feels comfortable. It feels distinctly San Carlos. It has a sense of place. And what we're seeing with the economy, and just generally, you know, the growing economy in the Bay Area, but no matter where you go, is that what we're seeing is that things are becoming very similar everywhere you go. And, you know, the woman mentioned Burlingame. There's been a tremendous amount of construction recently in Redwood City. I've heard a lot of comments and concerns about that. And when you go to those places, they're places where, you know, you can get a hamburger, you can buy, you know, a pair of pants, but there's nothing that feels unique and special and a real connection to, you know, to your town. I really appreciate, you know, Matt is really focused on the existing businesses that are here and now, and I really appreciate that, because those businesses have invested in our community. A lot of times, when you go into the business, the owner is there. You know, they sponsor local sports teams, they host charity events, they know the community, and that's special. And when you have a chain store that's the same as everywhere else, with a regional manager, they don't necessarily have that same connection to the community. What this is about is about giving the public and the community an opportunity to weigh in. And there will certainly be times where a chain store will say, "Hey, I want to come into San Carlos," and the community will say, "That's great. You know, this is, this fits really well with our town. We don't have a local small business that wants to do this service or provide this kind of, these goods. So come on in. We'll welcome you with open arms." There are other cases where we'll say, "Well, hey, isn't there one of those just down the road at this shopping center? Isn't there one in San Mateo? Isn't there one in Redwood City? Isn't there one in Palo Alto? Why do we need one here? What does that, why does that make us distinct? Why does that make me want to go downtown? Why does it make me want to, you know, invite my family to come downtown?" And so it's really about creating an opportunity for the public and our community to have a conversation when we're changing the downtown. Mark, you know, mentioned, "What's the urgency?" Well, it's really about, do you want to be proactive or reactive? That's the way I think about it. And the reason to say, "Hey, let's just start today if we all agree," is to be proactive and to think about this for the long term, because what I'm concerned about is if we take a long time to study, then some stores will come in under the old rules, and then we'll say, you know, we will say, "Well, we should have done that," and all of you will say, "Why didn't you do that when you had the chance?" So it's not an emergency, but it's about being proactive. And with unprecedented level of buildings turning over, rents going up, I do think there's going to be, you know, big changes. We've seen changes right in our neighborhood, in Redwood City, in Burlingame, and other places. So I would say to Matt, you know, I'm definitely open to having staff look at noticing folks, and I hope my colleagues will support me. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. And I'm going to keep my comments brief, because I just kept checking them off as Cameron kept making the point, so. Nice job. My only comment is, I, you know, this really just, like, as everybody said, hits a pause button, gives us an opportunity to look at things, and it also, in the long run, gives small businesses a chance. And we hear over and over again that, how difficult it is for small businesses in this country to survive, and even to get started. So I think it's a, I think it's a good thing, too. So I'm going to end it with that, and we have a motion. Oh, did we need to do anything else with Matt's suggestion to have staff look further at, what was it, the, cleaning up the ordinance, basically, to allow for this business of noticing on the expiration of leases? Is that something we do separately? How does that fit in?
That I would consider to be like agenda-setting. It's not really part of the urgency ordinance.
All right. So we would agree to set that for a later meeting. Okay. Well, let's vote on this then. Yvette?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, we're skipping, we're actually putting Item 11A to the end. We are going to now move to Item 10, or 12A, excuse me, consideration of adopting a resolution setting days and hours for the dog run/off-leash dog exercise area over a portion of City Hall Park, Elm Street and San Carlos Avenue adjacent to City Hall, in accordance with San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 6, Animal Control, Section 6.04.510E. Christine?
Yes, it was a mouthful. Christine Boland, Parks and Recreation Director, I just want to thank you sincerely for your efforts on Saturday. I don't know about you, but I came home with more paint on myself than I think was on the wall, so thank you very much. The park looks beautiful. As the title suggests, we are here this evening before you to confirm the hours that have been set for the City Hall Dog Park. And just as a quick background, council did take action on March 9th to confirm the park for off-leash dogs. Reopened after construction and landscaping on September 14th. And just as a reminder, I had to cancel the pilot program at Burton Park in Highlands after about three years for different reasons. And during that time, we searched for a new location with the responsible dog owners of San Carlos. Our current code section allows the director to designate areas and times for unleashed animals. That's 1212270. 1212070 allows the director to have the authority to close any park facility. I've taken this out of context, but basically, it's for maintenance, public safety, et cetera, hazardous conditions. So where we come into conflict in the code is Section 6.04, under Animal Control, that was recently adopted, more so under the vicious animal sections. But in there, which was a model from the county that you adopted, provides that hours for dog runs be set by resolution of the City Council. Now, clearly, that conflicts with the code sections that I previously mentioned, and what we intend to do is modify the code at a later time during one of the code cleanups to eliminate these competing code sections. I want to just thank you for your patience, the mayor and council on both sides of this issue. I know you've had a flurry of phone calls and emails recently, and just want to thank you for your patience. Recently, as of this morning, we had a meeting with the representatives of the Pacific hacienda condominium complex. We had a nice, open discussion. We intend to meet again next week, and we'd also like to meet with representatives of the dog community to see if we can come to some kind of compromise to make both sides easier to live with, keeping the park open, and also understanding the wishes of the residents, the neighboring residents. So we will be back to you after we meet with both parties. Basically, the recommendation is the hours that are currently established. It's adopting a resolution setting the days and hours for the portion of the park, which is considered the dog run, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, November 1st through March 31st, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, later on in the year, on a daily basis per this code section 604. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'm sure you have quite a few speakers this evening.
Questions for Christine? Matt?
So the one question I have is, you've given us a list of ordinances that are on the books regarding park closures and, you know, dog runs and so forth.
Correct.
What about ordinances on barking dogs, since that seems to be one of the major issues that is driving the complaints here?
There are, Councilmember Grocott, there are nuisance ordinances in residential areas, neighbor-to-neighbor, house-to-house, and those are different code sections, I'm sure, and those would be handled through the police department. And I think you have, there's kind of a lengthy process to go through, but in the old days, I think they would actually confiscate the dog, but now that's no longer allowed.
So then, as a follow-up question, maybe this is for the city attorney then, is, couldn't that be something else that we could also look at? It's not on the dais tonight, but an ordinance that would, you know, give effect, give, you know, there could be an action, and there could be a reaction, where we enforce barking dogs, dogs that are being overtly noisy in our parks, and offering something that would allow control of that?
Councilmember Grocott, in the Animal Control Ordinance, Chapter 6 of the code, there are, there is regulation that regulates excessive barking by dogs. That's a matter, it's a matter of proof, though, is, in our experience, all the dog bark cases, nuisance dogs, if you will, were excessive barking in a neighborhood setting, not in a park setting. And the, yeah, there's a general, also, there's a general noise ordinance that the city has that is a pretty high standard, and it depends on the time of day. I think that was one of the bases for the hours change that's being requested, is to kind of move the dogs during the time of day when the ambient noise is more prevalent. And so the perception of the neighbors would be less extreme when you have the hours a little later in the morning and limited at the end of the day.
So if I hear what you're telling me is, it's a little bit like the ordinances that restrict noise emitting from automobiles, where you have to prove the decibels, and also, you have to prove the decibels relative to the ambient noise at the time of day?
And the location of where you put the meter has to be, is part of that, too, because it might be noisy right up against the fence, but it's measured from the adjacent property line.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question's actually for Greg, which is that, since the, one of the conflicts, for lack of a better term, that we have in the municipal code involves the new Animal Control Ordinance that we recently adopted. Is there, when, did you have an opportunity to review it, to see if there are any other conflicts that potentially bear on this?
There may be others, because the Animal Control Ordinance is, it's a model ordinance, and there's some issues. When we have a model ordinance, like the Animal Control Ordinance, we tend to enact them without changes, because our contract with the county and the SPCA has some limitations on their willingness to enforce if we make any changes to the ordinance. So I have a feeling that's one of the reasons why the ordinance was passed without that many amendments. But, yeah, as part of our comprehensive review, we're going to make sure that there aren't any other conflicts between different chapters. But I think this is the basic area where there are potentially conflicts, because Chapter 12 is, talks about city facilities, and has a whole subsection on park facilities, which includes a discretion with the director to establish off-leash dog areas, and then we have this model ordinance. So we'll make sure that we compare not only that, but other sections as well.
Thank you.
Cameron?
So Christine, the current hours are dawn till dusk, is that right?
No, that has been changed.
Okay.
The current hours are...
But you're asking us to...
Confirm the hour, the changed hours.
Confirm the hours.
Yes.
Okay. So you are, you met with folks from Pacific hacienda today?
Yes.
And you're meeting with, you will meet with representatives from the dog community?
We will be, yes.
And you say you're going to propose a compromise, and you're going to come back to us?
We're going to have the two parties get together separately at first, perhaps together, and we would like to propose, well, first, we'd like to hear from the Pacific hacienda side, and then take that to the dog owner's side, and then work from there.
But you, you're asking us to take action, but you anticipate sort of future action? Is that, is that the best way to characterize it?
Yes. Yes, it sounds like it, yes.
And can you talk about the basis for, so if, maybe, let me ask a brief question for Greg. Greg, if we take no action today, does it revert back to dawn to dusk?
It would revert to the code section in Chapter 12 that talks about the hours of park facilities, and I think it is dawn to dusk for dog... of park facilities, and I think it is dawn to dusk for, for dog, dog facilities.
Okay. So if we take no action, it reverts to dawn to dusk. If we vote, then it goes from 7:00 to 8:00 immediately, and then 7:00 to 9:00 in the spring and summer. Can you talk a bit about the rationale and the basis by which, sort of, you made the administrative change, and then you're asking us to make the, to vote today? And what's, what's sort of the justification for it?
Sure. Well, dawn is very early, and after we started receiving complaints from neighboring residents, we felt that perhaps 7:00 a.m. was a little bit later, a little bit better for the folks trying to run their dogs before they go to work, and subsequently the folks coming home from work, because dusk now is at the 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock hour, and changes every day. So for the folks getting off work, we're trying to accommodate those folks, and that was based on those requests as well. So we thought that those hours would be adequate for the park at this time.
Okay, so is it, would you say that it's, that the change was meant to accommodate the dog owners? Or is it, did you see it as a compromise, I guess is my question, or did you see it as a, a way to, what was the goal? The goal was to make sure that we had regular times that people were aware of, or the goal was to make sure that we maximize the amount of time that folks could use their dogs, or...
The goal was to kind of split the baby, have the, not only have the gates locked, but opened at 7:00 a.m. after dusk, or after dawn, actually. Right now, it's about 45 minutes to half an hour after that time, and also to accommodate those folks that are coming home from work. So it was kind of this, you know, dual reasoning.
So it opens later in the morning and closes later in the evening, is what you're saying? Okay.
And if, if I may, I'd like to ask the city attorney to actually read the specific code section that would, that it would be reverting to, because it's actually not sunrise to sunset?
It's 12.12.280, subsection A. It says, "Dogs may be allowed in off-leash, may be allowed off-leash in designated dog exercise areas. No person with or without a dog shall be in the dog exercise area one half hour before sunrise, nor any later than one half hour after sunset." So that's the, what it would revert to. It's in our code.
Okay. Thanks, Christine. I'm going to save my comments till later. This is a public hearing. I do have speaker cards, and the first speaker I have is Shirley Carlson.
Shirley, before you begin, I owe you an apology. You left me a voicemail on October 1st. I was on vacation. It turns out that when people were leak calling City Hall, leaving me voicemails, they weren't getting to my cellphone voicemail, and it was a technical issue. I found 10 of them, and the only reason I found out is, interestingly, because the undersheriff left me a voicemail a couple of weeks ago, and he, I saw him the other day, and he said, "Why didn't you call me back?" And I said, "What are you talking about?" He said, "I left you a voicemail," which led me to contact IT Department, and I found 10 unanswered voicemails, beginning with yours. So please accept my apologies.
Thank you. I'm here tonight, I am a resident and a homeowner, property owner. My parents moved here in the late 1940s. I grew up here. I currently live across the street from your City Hall and your park. It wasn't always a dog's park, it was a park for all residents. It's well-used. The hours that you're talking about, 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 to 9:00, every day, every day, 14 hours. I understand there's a need. My need is for some quiet, too. I have a deck I'd like to use. I'd like to have some quiet also. You've placed this park, or designated this area for the dogs off-leash. There is a need, but this park sits in the middle of three high-rise concrete buildings. The echo sound from dogs barking is tremendous. I have dual pane windows, and all of us rent this, do. We still can hear with our doors closed. When is my time? I live here, I'm a property owner, I grew up here. I grew up here. I went to San Carlos High School and no longer exists. I ask you to really consider this. Give us some days when these gates are closed, all day. Give us some time. We are asking for our time. They have theirs. Let us have ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Walter Ranieri?
Mayor, council, it may get to the point where I can, I can, might make my way up here all by myself, so...
You are becoming a familiar figure.
Someone's going to knock or so when I got a few minutes, a few seconds left, since I cannot read or, or deal with the timing thing. Cameron made a very interesting point. Downtown San Carlos is our collective living room. City Hall Park is our collective patio. We all need to be able to use it, and currently that's just not possible. The change in hours that you're proposing, the staff report to you says it's limiting the hours. Well, it may limit the hours if you think of it as a 24-hour day. It's not 24. It's actually expanding the hours of the park significantly, instead of limiting it. It's creating a situation where the peaceful coexistence of the community is being fractured, and this expansion of the hours is only going to fracture it further. I am very interested in coming together as a community to put together a resolution that works. If you change the hours now, you're going to change them again, I guarantee you. There's risk associated with doing this now, because it's only going to make the problem worse. And let me tell you, I'm one of those people who, when I lose something, sometimes I got to crawl on my hands and knees to find it, because that's the only way I can do it. It's dark out there, and the idea of someone, a perfectly responsible dog owner, trying to find poop in the middle of the night, it's not going to happen. So it happens...
Please, Pete, give him...
So, excuse me, I mean, the idea is that there is a solution that will work if it's a community-based approach, so that we can all benefit from our community patio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to remind people that I understand you're in support of one side or the other, please, please hold your applause, this is not an entertainment venue, although it may seem like that sometimes. Okay. Next, we have Carolina Berstrom.
Mayor, council members, I live right next to the dog park, and dog owners who don't live nearby have called us cruel, pathetic, and that we should get a life instead of complaining about the dog park. So I wanted to tell you about my life. I can no longer enjoy a cup of coffee on my balcony. I can no longer open a window to let some fresh air into my home. I can no longer have a conversation with a friend in my home without having to listen to dogs barking. I can no longer read a book on my couch in the living room without having to listen to dogs barking. I can no longer enjoy a meal at my dining room table without having to listen to dogs barking. I work from home, and I can no longer work on my computer without having to listen to dogs barking. I love dogs, this is not an issue about that, but I don't want this to be my life. I have to deal with it right now, 13 hours a day, seven days a week. Dog owners visit for an hour and then get to go home. You wouldn't want to live right next to the dog park either, and that does not make you pathetic. I would like that only request not only to not extend the hours, as has happened, but they also consider finding a more appropriate location for the dog park. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolina. Next is Jillian Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I'm also talking about City Hall Park. I miss City Hall Park so much. City Hall Park is surrounded by apartments and condos, people who do not have backyards. It was the perfect example of why city parks exist. It offered green space to people who do not have their own. My family played frisbee there after work, and we had at least three of my son's birthday parties there, and we were never alone in the park. People were sitting in benches, at the picnic table, and on the grass. Ironically, most landlords do not allow dogs in the home, in rented apartments, so this park is of no use to many of the people who live around it. So this change has completely disenfranchised a large number of surrounding community. I've been told that City Hall Park is the only park that works as a dog park, because the neighbors around Burton Park, Arguello Park, and the Highlands Park complained. Why are their complaints more important than ours? Parking has also been impacted, and once the senior center opens again, you'll hear that from a lot more people. Why would you put a park like this in one of the most congested areas of the city? I love dogs, I think dog parks are a great idea, but the City Hall Dog Park was a bad decision. It has negatively impacted the quality of life in this neighborhood. And also, I keep hearing this phrase, "portion of city park." There is no portion of city park that's left to use, except for some picnic tables on tan bark, and that's, we tried to even play near there, and we couldn't, because the dogs were barking, and so anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jillian. Next is Molly Deuge.
I apologize. I'll be brief. I am here on behalf of dog owners, myself as a dog owner. I don't understand these, I have a hard time understanding some of the things I'm hearing, because this dog park is on a very busy corner. I hear buses go by, there's a lot of traffic, and I kind of stand back and go, "Why would you buy a home there if you're so concerned about noise and congestion?" Second of all, I've gone to the park many, many times, and I have never had a problem finding a parking spot, different hours of the day, right in front of that park. So the parking issue, I don't, I'd love someone to do a study on that, I don't see it. I have never seen it. And then, thirdly, I have lived in San Carlos for eight years. I hear a lot of people that have spoken, talk about the use of that park. I have never seen anyone in that park in the last eight years when I've driven by it, so I find that hard to believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Next is Chris Hunt.
Through the chair, through the chair. Mr. Mayor, is it possible that there are people who may want, who have submitted cards who may be up in 207?
There's a lot of people who left about an hour and a half ago.
All right. All right. Next would be Joseph Caprione.
Mayor, council, Jeff, Jay, I came here to find out who was the one that approved City Hall Park to be used as a dog park. I cannot believe that you people did that. It's ridiculous to have all that there. I'm a dog owner, I got a 90-pound dog, I can't run it in that park. If I was, I'd be bouncing balls off your windows, okay? It was a stupid place to put it. Everybody that comes to this city from anywhere in this country or in this world has to come to this building and smell that park. I agree with the people that are against it. You know you have other places that you could put this park. North Crestview Park, if you just took the money that you put into that fence and all the improvements, you could have done something up there. The grass that you're trying to plant back in there, you really think that's going to stay? Seriously? Well, I see another foolish mistake by council, and I'm sorry to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Caprione. Next is Nicole Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. If I may, address some of my fellow park patrons, that I speak on their behalf.
Please speak to us, they can hear.
No, 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 I was just suggesting that they have asked me to speak on their behalf as well, to minimize the amount of time that we spend here tonight. I'd like to remind the council that there were several of us that worked very hard at making some proposals at what properties were available in San Carlos to initiate the dog park. We spent a lot of time and research to, we proposed five different locations. It was the city council that chose, or the Parks and Rec Department that chose City Hall Park. And, you know, we have asked simply for a space where we can exercise our dogs. There are some of us who have limitations in our mobility, there are some age limitations, and this location seemed to be the best place that met everybody's needs. And we, at the time, received 100% support of the council, I believe, at the time of the vote, that it was approved by the entire group. When the park began, we complied with the hours of dawn to dusk. It was easier, of course, because it was summertime. But even that was ambiguous. For those of us who really are there in an attempt to be responsible citizens of this community, responsible dog owners, I apologize for my outbursts, but I do resent the characterization that those of us who are there after hours in the dark don't make the effort to pick up after our dogs. I know several, myself included, not only do we pick up after ourselves with flashlights, but we seek out opportunities, if, if somebody else has missed it, we'll pick it up. The characterization that this group is, is anything but responsible, I think, is erroneous, and it's reckless, and I don't appreciate it, frankly, because we've put a lot of work into doing this and being the right kind of people who are there. We're happy to self-police if that's necessary, and we're open to that suggestion, but something other than just an amputation of the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. Dorothy Dale.
I come before you tonight as a citizen of San Carlos for decades now, and most recently, in the last 12 years, have lived across the street. I've always considered myself extremely lucky to live in San Carlos, deemed the city of good living, as your city logo reads above you. I don't feel that this is the case any longer due to the dog park across the street, the noisy dog park. I cannot believe that any person within the city of San Carlos would raise their hand to say, "I would love to live across the street from a dog park." Our homes are a refuge, as stated that we live in a condo complex. Our homes are a refuge, serenity, a place to relax, quiet. It's difficult to relax when all you hear is dogs barking. To extend the park hours is completely unacceptable to me. I'm stressed and saddened by the poor decision that our council and city staff has made to place a dog park in a downtown residential area. By allowing this, your message is clear that the dogs are a priority instead of the citizens that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Next is Laura, is it Liloquist?
It is.
Got it right.
Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about my experience at the dog park. I'm a resident of the White Oaks area, and I have a lovely Rhodesian Ridgeback pup. Because I'm on a work sabbatical, I have been at the dog park on lots of different days during the week, as well as on the weekend, and also lots of different times during the day, the morning, the afternoon, the noon time. And so I've been able to observe a lot of what goes on at the dog park throughout the hours when it's open. So let me tell you what I think is really special and unique about this. There are parents with kids and their dogs, or dog, who stop by on their way after school pickup, and they do it because the dog park is right there on their way home. There are children who come and walk their family dogs at the park. Just this morning, I met a 10-year-old girl who was there with her labradoodle, and she walked from a neighborhood nearby. There are older citizens who also walk their dogs to the park. There are older citizens who also walk their dogs to the park, again, because it's so convenient and unique in that location. There are people who stop by for an hour and socialize. I have never met anyone who's not responsible, who doesn't take responsibility for the waste of their dog and other dogs. And when barking does occur, we're all very sensitive to that. You know, it's not, it's not something we don't care about. We do care about that, and we try to deal with it. There are also people who stop by and hang out just outside the fence to watch the dogs. They may or may not be dog owners, but they come and form part of the social agenda there. I hope we can find a way to address everyone's issues and keep the dog park where it is. I think it's very unique and very useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Please. Next is Marcos Vergara.
Thank you for this, giving me this opportunity to voice my opinion regarding the dog park. My name is Marcos, and I've been living in San Carlos for 26 years now, all of it on Chestnut Street. So I am, I have witnessed how the City Hall Park had provided much-needed green space for all the area's residents. I don't have anything against dogs or dog parks, but I believe that the conversion of this park into a dog park was a very bad and ill-conceived idea. It's not a coincidence that all other cities in the peninsula and state of California, I would say, choose remote locations for their dog parks and not in the middle of their downtown. It's like keeping your cat's litter box on top of the living room coffee table. And I think, and I would hope, that if a similar business, let's say a private business, let's say a dog kennel, wanted to operate in a residential area in San Carlos, our zoning laws that we have been hearing off so much tonight would not allow it. And I wonder why we allow the dog park to exist where it is. Lastly, I would like this council to know that your support for this park has turned my city of good living into the city of dogs peeing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is John Seiling.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here, John Seiling, representing the Parks and Rec Foundation of San Carlos. Foundation of San Carlos, the Parks and Rec Foundation of San Carlos would like to encourage council to maintain its support and commitment to the recently completed, long overdue, and sorely needed dog park. It's an excellent solution to serve the needs of a significant population of residents who have no other safe, easily accessed San Carlos location for quality off-leash dog play and community building. We understand that tonight's discussion by council is focused on shaping the dog park hours, but feel it prudent to reaffirm our support for the park in general. According to USA Today article published in 2011, "There are now more households with dogs than with kids." Many dog lovers have kids, of course, but in congested cities, where there are large concentrations of singles and childless couples and a dearth of open space, dog parks have become the equivalent of playgrounds and community centers. Dr. Lynette Hart, director of UC Davis's Center for Animals and Society states, "Establishing a dog park creates a community center of activity where friends and neighbors gather to relax. Users of dog parks are self-policing so as to maintain the appealing environment. Creating dog parks is a method for more efficiently educating dog guardians and facilitating them in assuring excellent behavior of their dogs. The benefits of dog parks are well documented, widely supported, and manifest locally and globally. Let's stay the course, work as a community, make adjustments as we go, and live up to our claim to be the city of good living." Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next is Sherri Selwood. Hello, Sherri.
Sherri Selwood, I'm here as, just as a private residency, resident this evening. I wanted to let you know that I'm also a dog park user and a condo liver, condo liver with no backyard. So with the loss of Burton and the other locations, I have had nowhere that I can run my dog off-leash or socialize with other dogs. I will just real briefly give another perspective on Pogus Ridge. That's my backyard, and I can actually hear from my home people walking up that trail. But that is a very steep trail. The off-leash area there is wooded and hilly, and it's inaccessible to a lot of our folks. It's inaccessible to me now, I've got some mobility issues, and just simply can't use that kind of area. What I do see, I want to just reiterate really quickly, I have never had a parking issue out there. I also, when I'm there, as I'm leaving, I generally see people walking in from all directions. So I'm seeing a lot of people walking to that park from downtown, so it is getting neighborhood usage. I stop by while I'm running errands. I do very much want to work with the neighbors to make it successful for everybody. I'm sure there are compromises that can be made. Again, as John said, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. One thing that I have seen in this type of areas over time is that they develop a culture, and right now, this park is very young. And you will find that there are people that are acting as ambassadors or mentors to other people that may not understand the etiquette of a park, and I think that you will see, I see people picking up, but I also see people out there saying, "Hey, you don't want to stand by the gate, that causes the other dogs to bark when you bring your dog in." I'm seeing people calling out when somebody's missed something picked up. So I would just like to encourage you to stick with it. Let's let it settle, let's work through some of the problems. But I was also part of the group that looked at other locations, and there are darn few places in town that you could, could put a dog park that is not going to be adjacent to someone.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, and Linda Conover.
Thank you very much. A lot of the things that people have been talking about are very emotional-based. The barking, there's not barking the entire time, everybody's there. I've spent a lot of time at the park with my dog, and there are not dogs barking the entire time. I spent, you know, in the morning, the afternoon, the evening. And like it said, been said before, people are picking up after the dogs. The dog park does not smell, and I'm not sure where you get that. I don't have a backyard, so this gives me a perfect place to let my dog run and get to know other dogs so that he's more, you know, better adjusted. It gets me, it's a community for me now, because I know more people since I've been going to the dog park than I did before. The dog park is currently used more than it was before it was a dog park. It's well-lit after hours, so there's no problem with us being able to find dog poop to pick it up. And I would like to work together with the other citizens in the area so that we can make this a place that works for everybody. But I am a citizen, there are many citizens of the city of San Carlos that have pets. A large number of people have pets. So this isn't, you know, something for, you know, may not be for the citizens that don't have pets, but there are a lot of San Carlos citizens that do have pets. And that's pretty much all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I don't have any other speaker slips. Come on up.
I'd like to call for speaking on my behalf, but I also wanted to add just a vote of thanks for providing the park. Our dog, Tootsie, really loves it, and we go there several times a week. We also go to Pogus Ridge during the day, but you really can't go there at night. So appreciate you providing it and keeping it accessible for us, and thank you very much. It makes downtown San Carlos really, really a destination for us every evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just speak for just 20 seconds really fast?
I think, hang on just a second, there was one of them.
There's someone else.
All right.
Yes or no?
Come on up, and then this gentleman here.
Hi.
Can you give us your name?
Sure, my name is Sandra Clayton, and I just want to thank everybody who's worked so hard for this, for this park. And I just want to say, like, I go there every single day, and I'm somebody who has mobility issues, and I can't drive to Pogus Ridge, and I can't take my dog somewhere, but I have to walk for my disease. And so getting this, just opening this dog park, not only that, but I've met people in this room, and it is really a community place where we come together and we help each other, teach each other how to, how to make our dogs better. You know, how to like, you know, when they're, they come in and they're barking, and people don't know they're trying to socialize their dog. And we do help them, and we do tell them, you know, how to, how to calm it down. It's really not that loud, and there's several, several, it's really not, but there's several elderly people that I've seen come in, and, and I don't want to call them out as who they are, but I've cleaned up after their poo because they can't actually do it. But they can, they can only walk like a couple blocks, and they've told me, like, now I can have my dog go somewhere. And I'm willing to like stand up and help the people who can't do a better job. But I just want to thank everybody who's worked really hard for this place, and we need it. I'm a former teacher, I love schools, but I just want a place for my little baby, I don't have human children. I just want a little corner for him to run around while I pay taxes for the kids to have a good education. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. You can fill out a speaker card in the back, please. Yes, sir. Did you want to speak next? Why don't you go in the back and give a speaker card?
Mr. Mayor, council member, thank you for letting me speak out tonight. My name is Kurt Hemmings, and I'm a resident of San Carlos. I've been living here for eight years, lower level of San Carlos. I have two dogs, and over the past two months, I've visited the new dog park about 20 times. I think, I think there's a lot of self-policing in the park. I think, you know, we live in a location, I want to say that we've achieved what the council set out to when we established the dog park. We have enhanced the community. Unfortunately, there is divide, and I encourage the council and members to consider three points of view, the behavior of the owners and the canines, the noise ordinance for the zoning. I'm periodically woken up by the commuter train that starts and begins at 5:00 in the morning, and then the, the waste management, the trash vehicles that start at 6:00 every morning on all hours of the day and on all days of the week. And I think we have to tolerate that, living in a high-density area of the community, that includes bearing over with one another and trying to get along. So thank you for letting me speak out, and I hope that we come to a resolution that everyone can be happy with.
Thank you, Kurt. And we have Nora.
Good evening. I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I live directly across the street from the City Hall Dog Park. And I appreciate all the studies done, and everybody, you know, bringing their opinions, and, you know, you guys are there many times a day and a few hours every day, but I live across the street. I cannot move right now because of rent costs are too high. The dog park for me has been very disruptive. My father has, you know, a terminally ill disease, and when he comes to visit, he cannot come into my house, I cannot open the windows, I cannot open the doors. The dog barking causes anxiety for him because he has Parkinson's. So basically, what I'm saying is that the barking is absolutely disturbing to the residents of San Carlos. And, you know, I appreciate, you know, human life and dog life and everybody and everything in the world, but let's really get to the bottom of this, which is, it's about the residents. And, I mean, no offense to dog owners or anything, but I simply, it's not a place for me to live anymore. You know, I see the dog park every day, I open my windows every single day, 24 hours a day, I'm home, and I open the windows, there's dust flying into my living room. There's bacteria flying into my living room. I can't do that. I can't open the doors, I can't enjoy my balcony because there's constantly people across the street and dogs kicking up dust and barking going on. I can't even listen to the television, the radio, I cannot even focus. That makes it really hard for me as a resident, as a taxpayer, as somebody that's born and raised in San Mateo County. I simply am against this. This is my first city council meeting, and I'm, this is the first time I'm actually giving my opinion to you guys, and I absolutely do not like it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Joanna Lilienthal.
Thank you, I'll be really brief. I just, first of all, wanted to thank everybody who put this park through. This is a very well-needed community effort. I'm a dog owner, I have lived in San Carlos for 13 years, I have kids, our entire family enjoys this park. And as far as the hours, this is very important to me because dawn to dusk basically prevents anybody who works to use this park. And I am, it's impossible for me to go there during work, I mean, during regular work time. So extending the hours is crucial to me and to many other community members who I've met through my dog, because otherwise, we can't go and exercise our dogs in any way. Walking them, as you know, if you're a dog owner, doesn't do the job, or, you know, driving to San Mateo doesn't do the job either because that takes too much time from family and from preparing dinner and doing other things. As far as excessive barking, I've been at the park many times, and even though I have heard occasional barking, I've never heard anything that was excessive, that was going on for longer than a few seconds, because these things were disrupted by other dog owners telling the person who had the dog to please quiet their dog. The only time that I have heard dogs barking were actually dogs living in the apartment building that's, that's adjacent to the park, not across the street, but adjacent to the park. There are dogs that are barking there excessively, and we, dog owners in the park, have heard these, and I heard that there were even police going there trying to quiet these dogs down. So when you're talking about excessive dog barking, it's really not just us, it may be just, you know, other people as well. So that's all I wanted to say. It's very important for me that this park stays and that the hours are extended.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Tricia Walworth.
Hey, I live across the street from the dog park in an apartment, and I was sad when the park first opened because it meant I could no longer use it for myself. I used to enjoy picnics there and reading, and I wanted to be able to complain about it, but I actually now enjoy the park being there. I like getting to see the dogs. I don't find them that loud. They're a couple times later in the evening than I would like, or early in the morning on weekends. I have not noticed an increase in dog poop in the area overall. I walk in the neighborhood almost every day. It was a minor problem before, and it has continued, I think, at about the same level. I realize it's an emotional issue for everyone, and while I would personally like to be able to use the park, I think it's more important to let the dogs use it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Jane Cummings.
I want to be as brief as possible because I know we've all been here a long time. I'm actually a resident of San Carlos, I live across the street, and I agree with the folks here that have complained about noise, but I think the biggest thing for me that really hasn't been answered yet is the excrement problem. And I think it really is kind of hard for the folks that really are really responsible. And I know that there are people in here that are responsible and do clean up, not only after their own dogs, but others as well. However, for those that aren't responsible, there is a fair amount of excrement that has increased in the block from Elm to Walnut, or Elm to Chestnut. And when I have stopped a couple people, they just told me that it's not my problem. And I'm sorry, but I pay enough taxes, and I also work in EMS capacity as a nurse, that I'll be damned if I will call a cop to deal with a dog issue. It's as simple as that. So I think we need to get a little bit transparent on just how much money this is costing for everybody, okay? And, and I would like to see a Okay? And, and I would like to see a consideration of a fee for every dog that's in San Carlos, whether it's a San Carlos dog or not, to pay for the dog maintenance, for the maintenance of the park, for the maintenance of all of it. So, I would like to have consideration for a dog fee, for dog tags, and also a fee for, like a parking poop ticket, if you will, in any other neighborhood other than the dog park. There should be some kind of. And if you want to look at, from a labor standpoint, I think that you could use that inside of your volunteer pool inside the city of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Jody Duke.
I just sat down again. Thank you very much for seeing, letting me speak. I'm a resident of San Carlos, have been for about 30 years, for the whole time I've had a dog. I have been concerned about having a viable dog park. Because over the years, I take my dog places. I take him to the parks. And there isn't, dog parks readily accessible to us. So, what I do is I went to Burton before you even had the temporary position. And a lot of people did, because you have dogs. I mean, half our population has, has dogs. And so, we take them to all these places. And I wasn't alone. I would see other people. It wasn't legal, but I have a nice dog. I call him. He comes to me. So, he's under my control. I go to all these other parks, and we've had lots of people that go to them. And that's, that's what's going to happen. I really appreciated the city council looking at the dog park situation. I went to a lot of meetings. I know you guys were very considerate of trying to look at all the options, because realizing, we're taxpayers too. We have rights too. We have needs too. I mean, everybody does have needs. I go now, after coming to all these meetings, and I realize you guys tried really hard. You tried to make it a really nice park. I think you did an excellent job. I'm part of the dog community, that we try to police each other. But any type of policing, of any type of organization, I don't care what it is, with dogs or somebody else, it's not going to be perfect. No matter, if we had the perfect dog park, there'd be people here complaining. We had people complaining at Burton Park just because somebody was there with a dog. They would call and say, no, it's not barking. No, it wasn't pooping. I just don't like dogs. I don't want them there. And you're going to have that, no, no matter where you are.
Thank you.
Can I have one more second?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
All right. Last is Hannah Riley, and I apologize for not calling you in the right order, and you can be next.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the dog park. And I also live across the street. I am a dog owner, and I don't smell anything. I don't smell anything when I'm in the park. I don't hear barking. I do hear barking. It's usually not the dogs in the park, like, ever. I also want to say to the people that said that they're used to use the park as a quiet spot, there's Rossick Park up the street that I know is quieter, and it's not near the busy San Carlos street, so it's quieter. And, in my opinion, it makes the city better, and a better city, and a city of good living for all the dog owners and the dogs. Like, if you look at all the people in there, they're smiling, they're laughing, the dogs are having fun, they're tired after. It's great. And thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I believe we have one more speaker. You can hand me your card. Thank you. Linda Morales.
Don't start yet. I'm not here.
I'll give you your full term.
So, I read our little local paper about us being dog haters, people that don't like the barking dogs. There's about 600 people that live in the Elms across the street, next door, next door, next door. We hate dogs. I put my dog away, and when I went in there, I went in to make sure my dog was dead before they used it for a guinea pig. So, I don't hate dogs. And how dare them put nasty stuff in here, calling us dog haters? Because we want to sleep. We want a life. We want our yard. We want our decks. We want our, we want our town back. You're talking about making San Carlos quaint. How about making us the way we used to be, quaint? Okay, now, I got a few things, and I've scratched on this many times, and I tried to get in here early, and the doors wouldn't open, so my, my things are a mess. I bought in 1980 here. I've been here for 35 years. I used to live by the train track. I was used to hearing the train track because I knew it lived cheap by the train track. I moved here 35, 35 years ago, 1985, 1980, right across the street. We had no barking dogs 35 years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. Okay? So, that's BS. And the people that don't, that, the person that said, why did we buy here? Why did they buy here in a condo with a dog, with no yard? Why did they do that? We're wrong, but they're right? Always different. Okay, so I did a little scratching. It may not be exact. 376 hours a week, I hear dogs bark. 1,500 hours a month. Since September 14, I hear dogs bark every month. 1,500 hours. Seven days a week, on my Saturday, on my Sunday, on my Monday, on my Tuesday. Seven days a week, it doesn't stop. I tried to look up your guys' address, which I'm going to do, and I couldn't find it. And then Christine's, I'm going to look up her address, and I'm going to find it. And then I'd like all these people that love--
Thank you, your time is--
No, it is enough.
Yes, it is.
No, my two minutes is not up.
Everybody else has stayed in their--
My two minutes is not up yet. It's not up--
Why do you get to go over?
I haven't been here for two minutes.
Yes, you have.
I don't believe I have.
Yes, you have.
I don't believe--
Please sit down.
Where is it written?
I can turn off your mic. Would you like me to do that?
No, I want to look at something first. I might be the last one, but I might be the-- Oh, and I have a solution.
Your mic is off. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm talking loud. I have a solution which nobody even thinks about. You might want to put it on, because it's a solution nobody--
I want you to sit down. You're being rude to everyone in here.
I'm being--
Yes, you are. I'm sorry. I've lost my patience.
Okay. How about muzzles, or dogs, dogs, things on their neck? How about muzzles when they're--
We get it.
And, no, you didn't--
Yes, we do.
No, you didn't get it. No one's brought that up. If we muzz--
We've had about 25 speakers tonight. Please sit down. Next speaker is Jesse Peterson.
I thought they were done. I thought I was the last.
No, there's one more.
So, we have muzzles that will definitely stop the dog barking until we can resolve what the park--
Mr. Peterson, please come up. I'm sorry, Linda, please sit down.
Let's hear your point. You are not a nice man.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You are never nice.
Not to you.
No.
Continue.
To a lot of people.
All right. I think I live the closest to everybody. And I just moved here not too long ago. And the park was a nice place to go sit. I used to play disc golf there a lot. Don't know if anybody knows, but, but it comes to a point where now we can't find parking. The people that who say that there's no barking and there's no parking, there is parking and everything, they don't live there. You know, everybody's coming from areas to come here to this park, and none of them live here. You know, I live in the park pretty much. I'm the closest to the park, and we have to deal with this every day now. You know, I go to school, and I come home, I try to do homework, and all you hear is parking. You know, you try to find a parking spot, and there's people that are coming from the dog park, for the dog park, and parking in our spots. It's not our spots, but, you know, we only have one parking per household. So, we try to find somewhere close to our house. Now, we have to go around the block. You know, it's just, it's an inconvenience to us. So, that's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? No, you had your time. Move to, is there anybody who'd like to move to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yvette?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion because Robert's rule says that you're supposed to make a motion, and then we'll have the discussion. So, I also want to make, make sure that in full transparency, I do not own an animal. I have never owned an animal. That doesn't mean that I don't care about the city and what I'm trying to do, and all of us do. So, I want to make sure everyone understands that. Whether we own them or whether we don't, we try to do the best we can. Anyway, I'll make the motion. I move to adopt Resolution 2015 dash--
131.
A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, setting days and hours for the dog run slash off leash at dog exercise facility over a portion of City Hall Park, Elm Street and San Carlos Avenue adjacent to City Hall, in accordance with San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 6, Animal Control, Section 6.04.510E. Second.
Any motion and a second? Well, we have some discussion. Matt?
I think somebody mentioned there was a 5-0 vote on this park. So, I was that fifth vote, you might say, because Mr. City Manager said, for my vote, I could be on an ad hoc committee, which I'm not sure, as all things turned out--
Honesty.
Exactly. I'm not sure it was such a great deal. And I've told other people, I honestly, I see that as a weak moment in my career as a council member, because I probably should not have done that. My whole issue at the time, quite frankly, was just aesthetics, you know, what the place looks like. And forgive me for focusing on that, but, you know, I'm a designer by trade, so that's the kind of stuff I look at, aesthetics of what the buildings look like, what the parks look like, et cetera. And frankly, being on the ad hoc committee, you know, the ideas that I had, unfortunately, were too expensive, so we didn't do them. And we ended up with pretty much what I was kind of fearing, which is, you know, fence structure that goes around the park, makes it look like a cemetery in my mind. And I don't like it. Now, to say that there's no barking at the park is simply not true. I live downtown. I'm down here all the time. I come into City Hall for, for my business. And I can't tell you, any time that I've been here, for, for whatever reason, and I don't see dogs barking in that park. And I'll tell you something, most of them are large dogs. Pit bulls, shepherds, golden retrievers, et cetera. And they're, they're having fun. I, you know, hey, that's great. Dogs having fun. But it's uncontrollable. And really, in my mind, I own a dog. And my son has taken our dog over there a few times, and I told him, stop doing it, because I don't want my dog to get fleas, I don't want my dog to get heartworm and so forth, which is easy to do. All a dog has to do is go and smell some other dog's, you know, feces, and you get heartworm. Unless--
Do you have a medication?
Well--
Please, people.
I'm not discussing this with you.
You had your chance.
I'm making my comments. So, I guess what, the reason I'm focusing on the big dogs is because I kind of agree with one of the other people who spoke, who said, you know, if you live in a small apartment or in the downtown area, and you have a big dog, you have a problem, because you should live at least on a 5,000 square foot lot, and have a place where your dog can, you know, go outside and do its business, and you go pick it up or whatever. I understand dogs need exercise and socialization and so forth. Does that mean we have to provide it at City Hall? Again, I just think that's one of the biggest mistakes I ever made. So, looking at this ordinance and what's before us, extending the hours, I'd rather, you know, somebody asked earlier, what would happen if we did nothing? It would revert to half an hour before sunrise and a half an hour after sunset. Did I hear that correctly? I would rather have those hours. Now, that said, I would rather, and I don't think we're going to do this tonight in a short time, I would rather us look at something more creative, which is, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday hours, Tuesday, Thursday kind of hours, something that reduces some of them. You people that talk about, well, you know, I go to work, and I come home, and I need it. Fine, go walk your dog in the, on the streets. You don't have to take your dog to a dog park for socialization every single day or every night, when you come home from work. Again, I own a dog, and, you know, she gets out and she gets around with other dogs occasionally. But, you know, if you want to socialize your dog, that doesn't have to become our problem as a city and everybody's problem who lives around that park. So, I'm not for extending the hours. If anything, I think we should create more limitations, and maybe even have a day of the week, Sunday or something, where there's some peace and quiet, and there's no dogs allowed in the park whatsoever. So, that's where I would be looking today.
Please, people. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I want to start with just a quick question, and then I have a comment. The, so, I want to make sure I understand that, that voting against this measure would actually reduce the number of hours of operation in the park? For some reason, I had thought that, that if it reverts to half an hour before sunrise and half an hour after sunset, that would be more hours.
It depends on the time of year. I think this year, it actually creates more hours overall--
You mean today?
In the course of a day. In the summertime, it would have the opposite effect. It would, it would really lengthen the time.
Not to mention that right now, the, let me call them, the revised hours of operation don't start at half an hour before sunrise, for example.
Right. You're, you're looking at, basically with the, I just looked up sunrise and sunset, and I, you know, I don't know, I don't know how accurate Google was when I did it. I didn't really check where I was looking. I just looked at whatever popped up. And so, the hours of the park would be based on that, right now, if you took no action, 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. In the, in July, which is another date I looked up, the hours of operation would be 5:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, in other words, there's sort of a separate issue from--
So, you could see that, I mean, just the sunrise and sunset sort of begs for some modification that I think probably everybody in this room could agree on. You know, there's, those don't need to be the hours, but that's what the, that's how the generic municipal code's written.
Okay. Well, good. So, I mean, it may change the number of hours, contrary to what I would expect, but I'm, you know, I don't think too many people would be interested in having dogs be able to be out there barking at 5:30 in the morning. The, the comment I wanted to make, just as a general reminder to folks, is, is that this, this is a very passionate and very divisive issue in almost all communities. I do like to think that one of the things that's a hallmark of San Carlos is that part of the city of good living is that we try to get along with each other, and we try to make accommodations with each other. And those accommodations, by definition, you know, an accommodation that doesn't exact a cost, and not, not just talking money, I mean, a cost in some form, it's not really an accommodation at all. That's just like, hey, go ahead and do it. Doesn't mean anything to me one way or another. And, and I'm, I'm struck by a comment that my dad made to me many, many years ago. It had to do with golf parks, golf courses. And he said, you know, I have no interest whatsoever in playing golf. With all due respect to Bob and to Ron, who I know are avid golfers, he went on to say about how stupid he thought it was for grown men to be chasing small white balls around on, on, on fields. And he said, you know, in one sense, that would make, that would sort of argue that, why should I want to see any of my taxes go to pay for public golf courses? And his feeling was, that, you know what, even though they were of no use to him, and he had no interest in it, and it was a waste of his money in that sense, he was willing to make that kind of accommodation because in return, he got accommodations of other kinds, from, as being part of a community. And I just like to remind folks that, that, and we could all disagree on what accommodations are acceptable and what aren't, but living in a community, you have to be able to make accommodations. If we all take the position that I want nothing other than what I want, whatever that is, whether you're a dog owner or, or not a dog owner, pro dog park or anti-dog park, if you take that approach, there is no community. It totally disintegrates. And I'd like to think that we could find some way to work past that. I, I like the idea of trying to find some, as Matt was saying, some set of hours that--
Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind about the meeting time.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to extend the meeting till 11:00 p.m. Second.
All right.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
All right. So, I'll, I'll wrap up in the interest of giving other people a chance to, chance to speak here on the dais. I just think that, I like the idea of trying to find some set of accommodations that will meet various people's needs, where everybody will end up giving a little, and everybody will end up getting a little. And I think there's a way to do that with reserving some days, perhaps for the dog park not open-- dog park not open, or have restricted hours on some days and not others. For tonight, in terms of the specific action, which is what's before us, rather than us try to negotiate that here on the dais, I'm okay and support, you know, leaving the current motion and current rules in place, so long as staff continues to work on its efforts to find a more comprehensive solution. Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Olbert that I don't think we're going to be able to solve this tonight. The gentleman, Mr. Reinieri, I believe, made a comment that if whatever we do tonight, we're going to come back and do it again, and I wouldn't disagree with that at all. Because the way it's been discussed here, it was at least with staff, is that there's going to be meetings, and there's going to be some other agenda items coming back to us, and I think that's great. We're just trying, and I look at this, to be quite blunt, again, having never owned an animal or have a dog, I don't look at it as a dog park, I don't look, I look at it as a situation where we have to find a solution to an issue. It could be dogs, cats, trucks, golf courses, whatever it is, we've got to find a solution to this thing. So, or a middle ground, as my colleague indicated, because nobody's going to get everything they want. So that's why I made the motion for this item. I have some ideas. I honestly believe, as Mr. Olbert said, that it should be closed on a certain day, to be quite, this is my opinion, should be closed on one day a week, whatever that is, and shortened hours on another. To me, it's weekends. Nine to five on Saturday, closed on Sunday. But that's, folks, we all get an opinion, don't we? But anyway, the point is, is that folks are going to come and talk about this, and they're going to come back, and they're going to come back to us. So that's why I'm supporting the issue right now, to make it seven to eight, seven to eight, or seven to nine, I guess it says, and we'll go on from there.
All right. Cameron?
This is a tough issue for me. I, you know, I, we all come to City Hall quite a bit. Every time I drive by, I always look and see other folks out with their dogs. There's a ton of people in the park. I think it's a very successful park. I think it's getting a lot more use than it got before, and people look like they're having a great time. And that makes me, you know, really happy. Hey, we created something in our city that a lot of people are getting a lot of enjoyment about, and I take some pride in that. And I know that people get stress relief, getting out with their dogs, they get to socialize with other dog owners. I think it's a great thing that helps build community. But I think we've created a nuisance for a lot of people who live nearby, and I'm pretty empathetic with that. I don't think folks are coming out to City Council meetings for just trivial matters or because they have nothing to do on a Monday night. I think they are very bothered by that. And I ask myself the question, what alternative have we given them? And I haven't been able to answer that question. I think, you know, a lot of folks get a lot of benefit out of the dog park, but they do have other options. They may not be convenient, they may not like them, but they do have other options. For somebody who wants peace and quiet in their home, I don't know what option I can give them. I think we're effectively saying, get used to it or move. And that really bothers me. And so I take that very seriously. I think that when we create things for the community, it has to work for the whole community. This is something that is working for one part of the community really well, but it's not working for the whole community. So that's how I think about this. I think that there are many more dog owners than there are residents of the Pacific hacienda, but in this particular case, I think the pain that they're feeling, which I think is a noise issue, is real. And I think we have, they have no, we have no way to solve it for them. You know, if you have construction next to your house, it's a nuisance for a short-term period, and then eventually, they finish the construction and move on. There's no end in sight, and I think, you know, I think that, listen, dogs are going to bark, and frankly, you know, the more successful the park is, the more dogs are going to bark. Dogs get out, they run around, they want to bark. I think that's a good thing. Dogs should be able to bark. But I'm concerned about it. I appreciate the folks and their willingness to meet with staff. I heard it was a productive meeting today, so I think that's a good step. I do hope that we can find an accommodation, that we can find a compromise, that the folks who live in the building surrounding can find something that they would be willing to live with, under the, you know, acknowledgement that, hey, you know, potentially thousands of people are getting a lot of enjoyment out of this, and I think, I think that's great. But I still, I still don't know what I say to somebody who says, hey, it's, I'm in my home and it's noisy and there's nothing I can do about it. Still searching for an answer to that question. So I, you know, I don't really like the options that we have tonight to vote on. You can sort of vote for the status quo, or you can vote to make it worse, when I think there's sentiment on the dais that we want to vote to make it better. And I don't have that option in front of me. I don't know if we can make an amendment, or if the best thing is to say, let's vote for what we have tonight, as Mr. Grisilli said, and we'll come back and fix it after the first of the year. Jeff, I don't know, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah. I mean, you know, one of the reasons, obviously, that, you know, we can't come back with a comprehensive proposal tonight is because we're just starting to reach out to both groups to figure out, you know, what the issues are and what the compromises might be, if any exist. But in terms of tonight's action, you can amend the hours to anything the council wanted. Hours are on the agenda, so, you know, any other proposal related to hours could be introduced by the council.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
I made it. Would you be amenable to an amendment to constrain the hours, or do you want to just go with...
No, I gave you my opinion, what I think it should be.
Right. Well, and I agree with you that we are not experts on this, and we're not going to solve it, and frankly, it's a compromise. I just, I feel that, given the sentiment on the dais, given the public comment that we've heard from folks who live now, at least as a symbolic measure, we should constrain the hours slightly. But I wanted to see if there's support for that from other folks.
Like I said, I would adjust my motion to close it on one day, to be quite blunt, close it on one day, nine to five on Saturdays, and seven to eight, actually, on both, on all the regular days. I mean, that's, that's a, that's not, I'm sure that's not popular with a lot of people, but that certainly constrains the hours and gives people at least one day of quiet completely, and shuts the, excuse me, folks, seriously, you know, everyone gets to talk, but unfortunately, when it comes here, we do, okay? So the more you keep talking, the longer we're going to be here, and you can just keep talking away, ma'am, but that's not going to solve the problem, okay? Because we are the five voters this evening.
One day nice doesn't feel right. It doesn't feel right.
Ma'am?
You're done.
Ma'am, please.
Come on, Bob.
Anyway, so like I said, I, that's a middle, maybe it isn't a middle ground, maybe no one wants to do that. Like I said, to me, we can vote the hours, and then people are going to have a meeting and come back, because we're going to get hopefully better input from longer, from longer meetings and stuff like that. I mean, that would be, this would be a Band-Aid, just a suggestion, whatever folks want to do.
Let's hear what Matt has to say, and then we can come back and figure this out.
So I did, just looked up sunrise, sunset for San Carlos specifically tomorrow, it's basically seven to five. So that would mean 6:30 to 5:30, which is 13 hours, and then that would float. So what I said earlier about just leaving it as it was to revert back, I don't think that's a good idea. I think it's better to have something fixed. And I would support, for now, what Bob had said about we go seven to eight...
Seven to eight all the time, for five days a week.
For five days a week. Nine to five on Saturday, and close it on Sunday. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. All right. Is there a second for that?
Can I legally second his motion, even though I made the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right. Okay. Well, before we vote, first of all, I want to apologize to Linda. It's the first time in four years I've lost my composure. I was out of character, I was unprofessional. It's no excuse on my part, and I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have lost my cool. We're an interesting town. I'm, Bob, I'm glad that you came up with some alternatives. I've been, I've been really neutral on this the whole time. I grew up with dogs, I don't own dogs now. I didn't, I don't think any of us anticipated how this was going to turn out when, when the alternatives were being explored, and there were the problems with Burton Park, and I could be wrong, but I don't remember reading about barking being the problem. It was, you know, the dog waste and the fighting and those type of things, and the use after hours. So that was not something that was just in my mindset. So I appreciate everybody coming, and all of you, I think, made really good legitimate points, and they're all valid. We have competing interests here. I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm willing to vote for the substitute motion tonight, knowing full well that we're going to continue to work on this. This may not be the final answer. I don't know what the final answer is, I'm not going to speculate on it, because it'll get me in trouble, one way or another. So I think we should, I think we should, you know, we'll vote, we'll see where it goes, and before we do, I see Jeff wanted to make one more comment.
I did, and I hate to, I hate to do this to you at this hour, but it's actually very time and relevant to the season, before, as you're talking about this, because you're not going to have a chance to talk about this again until after the first of the year, right? We'll be having our meetings, but the council won't have this item before them again until after the first of the year. Do you want to consider having the park closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas Day?
Nice.
That would be up to the, I think that'd be up to the person that made the motion, right?
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, then it would be, the amendment would just keep it general, it would be end on holidays.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
So I'll go for that.
Yeah, I'll go for that.
All right. So we just amended our motion, our competing motion.
So now we have a second substitute motion. We have a second substitute motion, it sounds like, but...
All right. Be as it may.
All right. Before we vote on that, Mark, did you have another comment?
As I said, I anticipate that some constraints on hours would be forthcoming at some point. I have to admit that I'm a little concerned about the idea of us sort of winging it from the dais, without having an opportunity to let the process that staff was already following and that the community was actually engaged in, go to fruition and provide some more guidance. And I know that that'll come back and we can change things again. But I'm going to vote against the motion for simply that reason. I would actually prefer that we let the process that staff was working on go forward, and, you know, even here back, we have another meeting in December, we have a meeting in December. There's no reason why if some idea that worked for everybody came up, that we couldn't endorse it in that meeting. So anyway, I just, I'm uncomfortable with us doing this kind of winging this late...
I don't disagree with you at all. One question I have is if we vote on this tonight, when does this become effective?
By, since it's by resolution, it becomes effective immediately.
Okay.
And I'll step back just a minute, and there's a enforcement issue, because we have to prepare a new signage for the new hours, but those would become the hours immediately. It's just, we would have to make new signs to show the new hours.
Offer some grace.
Mark, I agree with everything you said, except I'm still going to vote for it. So, all right. Any other...
I wasn't more convincing, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have, all right, so which motion are we voting on first, and if we vote for that, the others are moot?
That's right. The substitute motion that I have is to limit the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. weekdays, nine to five Saturday, park, the fenced-in area is closed on Sundays and holidays.
That's great.
Okay. That's the motion. Yvette?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. We're going to move on to item 1112B, consideration of appointments to City Council Ad Hoc Housing
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. At a previous meeting, the City Council requested the creation of a housing subcommittee. That item's been prepared and is on the agenda tonight, so we're looking for appointments from the council for that committee. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Well, since I was the one that put this on...
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Ron Collins and Bob Grisilli as the city representatives to the city's ad hoc housing committee.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yvette?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. We're going to back up to unfinished business 11A. This is adopt a resolution approving on-call agreements for various professional services for capital improvement program projects for one year, with an option for two one-year extensions in the amount not to exceed $4.5 million, and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated contracts. Mr. Walter?
Mayor, City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Sorry about that.
Okay. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director, this item was continued from last meeting, and Grisly will just bring you up to speed on where that item is, and if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them at that point.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Grisly, currently, the city does have on-call engineering contracts, and the setup is we have two on-call full-service engineering contracts that covers 11 disciplines. So there'd be two main contacts with subs that covers the disciplines. The amount is not to exceed a total of $4 million. They're one-year contracts with options of four one-year extensions by the city manager, and the current contract with the extensions will carry us through July 2019. We've had these on-call contracts in place for a year. Staff has reviewed the contracts and found that there are some inefficiencies and some problems with just having two on-call general contracts, or basically working with their subs for the, for the technical needs, and that creates some inefficiency. So staff went out for a full RFP proposal, came back with a proposed on-call contract format that includes eight consultant contracts covering four disciplines, so it's two contracts per discipline, and the benefit is you work, the city will work directly with the firms that are focused and experienced in each discipline. The amount not to exceed is similar to the one that's current, it's a little bit higher, $4.5 million. It's a one-year contract with options of two one-year extensions by the city manager, which is compatible with our CIP projects, which are usually multi-year projects. The one-year contract with two extensions will carry us through 2019. It's set up so we have six months of a head start before the two-year budget cycles adopted, and we get to complete the two-year budget cycle CIP projects and have six months to wrap up and start the next RFP process. The recommendation tonight is to approve the agreements for various professional services for capital improvement program projects for one year, and approve the option for two one-year extensions for each contract, in a total amount not to exceed $4.5 million, and authorize the city manager to execute the contracts and extensions. And I'll be happy to take questions.
Bob?
So Grace, basically then, it doesn't, none of these come back to the city council? The city manager executes them? Okay.
Yes, as proposed, it's against the city manager for extensions.
Okay. I don't see any other lights on. Doesn't sound like there's any more questions for you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Actually, I think...
Oh, it's not a...
We need to hear, hear if there's anyone who wants to speak on this.
You're right, I apologize.
That's okay. Seeing none, go ahead.
Now I'm going to have to figure out exactly where it is.
11A.
It's a yellow.
Thank you. Yellow, but they're all yellow. I move to adopt Resolution 2015-...
This is 132.
132. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving on-call agreements for various professional services for capital improvement program projects for one year, with an option for two one-year extensions in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contracts.
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Matt?
Just like Mark said earlier on the issue before, not trying to wing it from the dais, dais, I'm not comfortable with trying to wing it from the dais to change this, but I believe this was on the consent calendar, I pulled it, and then we've got it on the agenda now. The reason I pulled it is because it's a lot of money, and it's a lot of time. 2019's a little, you know, quite a bit out there. Firms can change, we could have a different city manager, we could have a different Public Works Director, we'll have a different council by 2019, I can guarantee that part. I just don't think we should be making decisions that go out that far with this much money. And so, I'm going to vote no, hoping that if we have a majority no vote, the staff will bring it back with some more reasonable, what I consider to be a more reasonable proposal.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? Yvette?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
And with that, oh, Mark, you wanted to make one final comment?
Yeah, just briefly, that's something I should have mentioned in my public comments earlier. You know, once upon a time, we actually had an item that was going to be coming before us, addressing the issue of whether or not there was any incentive compensation due to the city manager for his performance for the 2014-15 year. I'm a little disappointed that we haven't taken action on that yet, and it sounds like the earliest that we're ever going to take action on it, if, assuming we do, is actually in calendar year 2016. And I say that not because I necessarily think that Jeff is entitled to that, but what I was taught, and what I always tried to do as an executive, is you don't break faith with your employees that way. If there's an arrangement that you're supposed to be following up on, then you follow up on it, even if you follow up on it and say, sorry, you're not entitled to anything this year. So I just wanted to register my dissatisfaction that the council has not addressed this issue.
Thank you, Mark. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.